Like I said, the signal to get our meeting started on.
That's you.
Roger, Roger. All right, well, we'll start our workshop discussions and city demonstration.
All right, I'm just going to make a few introductory comments and then I'm going to turn the mic over to for whom so he can get right into the demo. If you'll recall back in December, late December, we had a presentation where we brought to you a recommendation from the Community Engagement Commission. Based on a review of several products that they saw over a period of about six months. And we have actually three members of the commission here tonight. So if there are any questions in the interim, they can they can help provide any context. And at that time, on December twentieth, council expressed a desire to have Zen City come back and and perform a live demonstration. And so that's what we're going. To do tonight for whom is going to take over the controls, go through a live demo. And then we've got about an hour scheduled, we've got this set up for approximately thirty minutes of demo time to give plenty of time for questions and answers. As he goes along and then at the end, so without any further delay for whom, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor Kaminsky, Council members and staff and members of the. Commission for inviting me back to share a little bit more about who Zen City is or what we do and who. We work with and as well as how that work pertains to the goals, strategies and. Objectives that Liberty Lake has in place. So without further ado, I will go ahead, share my screen. So let's begin with who Zen City is. Zen City is a technology company. We work exclusively with local governments, villages, cities, counties and state agencies. And our goal is simple. We help city leadership to engage and hear from more voices in the community beyond the voices that are already engaged, which we certainly appreciate. Some of that work that we do, I made sure to include based on feedback from last meeting. Some of the names of clients that we work with and I listed here some of the names that are close to Liberty Liberty Lake either in proximity. Or population or projects that are currently happening in those areas. Very exciting news as recently as last Friday, we have officially began the onboarding of Airway Heights. Which I know is not too far from you all, so it'd be exciting to have a partnership in the neighborhood. So what exactly does Zen City that does Zen City do again? Zen City knows that the challenge is. It's hard to hear from more people in the community beyond the voices we already hear from. It takes a lot of effort and resources for large cities, especially for smaller ones. Where we come into play. Is we make it easier for city leadership to hear from more voices in the community. By lowering the barrier for participation. So more people can learn and be part of the process. And eventually. Give the city leadership meaningful takeaways to move forward with implementing its projects. Now, why meaningful takeaways is important in the case of Liberty Lake? Because we know that there are several things in a pipeline coming up. Number one is a comprehensive plan, which we know happens around thirty years and. The last engagement, I know that happened a while back, which is. A great opportunity, generational opportunity for us to educate the community and bring more people into the process. To co-design what the world, what the city would look like twenty years from now. To implement the comprehensive plan, of course, requires a strategic plan. And that will occur every five years specifically for Liberty Lake, it's important to understand. How we make decisions, especially around land use. How do we inform and how do we engage the community around topics like that? And on a yearly basis, we shift from that budget preparation specifically to the budget allocation on a tactical basis. To follow the steps to be able to implement the two above. And that is how Zen City aims to help the city of Liberty Lake. To reach its goals. What does it look like? Let's jump right in. In this example, today I will show you examples of comprehensive plans, strategic plans that we help with. Help local governments with as well as engagements that are relevant to both. Here's an example of one of our partners. This is a. Twelve thousand population community down in Florida. Where we see the Zen City Engage Platform in action. Here, members of the community can come. And do two things. A, learn about all the projects and initiatives that are taking place in their community. And two, share their feedback and co-design their community alongside the city leadership. Now, since we are talking about comprehensive plan, luckily. Oldsmar is working on one as well. So what does it look like when we arrive, when a resident arrives into the comprehensive plan of Oldsmar? Here, the city has an opportunity to tell its story and share information and storytell about what a comprehensive plan is. What is the history of previous comprehensive plans? Educate the community on timelines. When do things expect to happen, be are expected to happen and where are we today? In the same token, there's an opportunity to plant a seed with important dates. And information for upcoming meetings that are going to take place regarding this specific project. If there are any supporting documentation or maybe media assets like videos, images, maps. It's one place, one repository where people can come and learn about what is going on in their city, right from the palm of their hand. Other examples of comprehensive plans can come from neighboring communities in Ohio. Where. Some are more complex than others, of course. And what you see in front of you are opportunities to participate. In a survey. I will get to that in a moment. But before I do. I want to share a few examples of the strategic plans that lead to the comprehensive plans. Some examples come. From the land. Where. It's revising revisioning its strategic plan. You add a quote from your city leadership to try and communicate, lower the barriers between communities and their city leadership. Again, share important dates and timelines and engagement opportunities, multiple ones in the same project. So one place where I can stay informed. So if I want to, I can sign up for notifications. And stay engaged and hear on any updates if it's about timeline, if there are new opportunities to engage to be heard or. New documentation that has been added. Now, up until now, we looked at the educational component. Sharing the information, educating your community about what is either happening or about to happen. At the same token, you can also invite them to share feedback. And specifically feedback about things like land use and budgeting. So this is a housing. Project opportunity, for instance, we have anything from your data day checkboxes and list, etc. That the. You know, a survey that you would deploy would look like. Do things are a little bit more engaging and more. When we talk about the land use. How do we make it easy for our community to share feedback around topics as complicated as that? So here I have an opportunity. As a community member. To share on this interactive map. And say that. I think this would be a great. For this project. When we look at co-designing a community. We want to make sure that we not only describe to people what things could look like, but also show them. A certain development or project could look at certain several different ways. How would you like to envision this community? Well, I think that maybe this specific design. Is my favorite. And option two is my pick because it's more consistent with the current architecture. Now that pertains to some of the things that we talked about around land use. But when we shift into the budgeting exercises, it's important to offer the same opportunities. Here's an example of a participatory budgeting exercise. It's a great opportunity to do two things at the same time, educate and engage. So here the city says. Okay, members of our community, we have certain amount of funds dedicated for this project or for this initiative. How would you like to invest these funds? How do you envision those investments? Now, as a member of the community, maybe it's my first time. I come here and I engage and I pick and I pick and I'm like a kid at a candy store. And I think that cities have unlimited budgets. But hold on. It looks like I just went over budget. But I want to continue the engagement without making that difficult decision. It looks like. I will have to weigh my choices. So this is a great opportunity to let residents know that we have certain decisions to make. We're happy to make them together. And this is a great opportunity to learn about what the process looks like when it comes to projects like that. So now that I've learned. I know that I made one sacrifice somewhere. Another example of budgetary exercise. One of the things that we take more pride in as a government focused software company is that a lot of our improvements come directly from feedback from local government leaders. This is, for example, an example of that. So you can envision any of these items could look differently. You decide what they would look like, but at any rate, I come here as a mayor of the community. And the pie is fixed and I need to know that if I invest in someplace. I might have to take away from another. And these are sacrifices that are happening in real time in front of me. Some, of course, could be fixed. We can't make any changes because that's what it takes to operate the city properly. I learned something new. Now, what's important is that at the end of the engagement. Now that I arrived here. I have the opportunity to start a ripple effect of engagement. Because what we want is changing habits of engagement. So you can enlist the community in spreading the word. So now that I engage with this specific project, I can then share it on social media or email and let others know that, hey. There's maybe a parks project, maybe there's a strategic plan project, there's a budgeting exercise that I took. That I took part in. Come check it out. And speaking of habits. What is very important to to know is once someone finishes the exercise. He or she will arrive back in the front page. Why is this important? Because maybe what drew me here was a comprehensive plan. But now that I realized that it wasn't too bad. To engage with my local government, I wonder now what else is going on? Oh, look, maybe there's a satisfaction survey. Oh, look, maybe there's a sports complex that they're working on. What is this all about? Let's go dive in. And this. Members of the council and mayor begins the process, the positive feedback loop of engaging and re-engaging, learning and re-engaging. Now. There are other things that happen at the end of the engagement. Once a city closes the engagement, it can also share the results. In the same place that it educated the community, invited it to participate, it's also sharing the results. So here's who took part in this exercise. Remember the geospatial priorities that we had the opportunity to choose? Well. Looks like the community is very favorable of these two particular areas. Maybe we should take those into consideration. Specific results, an example of a specific results from another client of ours. Up in Canada, Hinton. Around budget. So you have your budgetary exercises that I showed you. And you also have the sort of more qualitative opposed support, no opinion about things that are more high level. Are we in favor of some infrastructure projects in general, or maybe increasing fees on something that we have in charge in the past? Now mindful of time. I would like to summarize, bring things to an end and open it up for questions and answers. And say that again, the reason why. We proposed the partnership with Liberty Lake is because we believe that we can partner in helping Liberty Lake. Co-design its comprehensive plan, strategic plan and its budgeting needs together with with its community. So it can include more people as part of the process. And on that note, I will stop sharing my screen. Open up for questions and I'm happy to reshare to illustrate some of the answers.
Thanks for whom. So with that, I'll open the floor to council and. Hillary, please ask any questions that you may have and and we can get down into some specific examples. Yes, sir.
Um, I I guess one of my questions is. Are we still going to be relying on other social media platforms for the actual engagement, the actual conversation taking place back and forth? That right now, we the city is posting like on Facebook and and. People can engage the city that way. Is this mostly just data collection?
So what we would propose to do is to add this as a channel specifically for certain types of engagement, although. Certain types means most everything that we would be seeking input on. We would not propose to cut any of our current channels. So for example, we recently posted something about a mural. And so what I would envision happening is that that those kinds of posts would continue to happen. And those posts would drive people to this site so that they could provide their input on that particular project. And then, as you saw, some of the illustrations, once they're done with that, they get kind of a view of what else is out there and they kind of navigate through all of those other things.
Got it. Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
A couple of questions. One, can you remind us of the cost?
So for an annual subscription, it is twelve thousand dollars and then we would. You know, my my recommendation would be that we need probably. I would say two years to get a true sense of what this is going to provide for us, but on an annual basis, twelve thousand.
Okay, so my second question, as I was listening to this is thinking, yes, this is a great platform, but I'm trying to figure out how this. This connects the dots. So you know, when when I was hearing about this conversation, I was thinking about, okay, how do we get people more engaged? What is going to be the mechanism whereby we get them engaged? And obviously, this is a mechanism. I'm just not sure how we. How we get them to that point. I mean, if they're not going to already sign on to the website or they're not going to. Participate in a survey that we do on our own city website is just having a more interactive website. Essentially going to spur more people to get engaged. And so I'm trying to understand, I guess, how we get from, I guess, point A to point C, which. Which I I consider point C to be the the website. It seems like we're missing point B and maybe that's what the staff is going to do. Maybe that's. Something else that I'm I'm not understanding.
So I will say the answer is is no, just having another platform regardless of how souped up it is and what its capabilities are. That the platform itself isn't going to get people to it. So I might open that question up to some of our Community Engagement Commission folks to provide some insights based on the conversations that you may have had over the last several months. But some of the ways that we would propose to do that is to continue having the conversations that we're having. On the channels that we're having, whether it's social media, using email, using the farmer's market, using some of these other things that we've not yet started, but we're proposing to podcast, City Academy.
Right.
Those kinds of things all together designed to drive people to this engagement tool when there's something to engage them on that we want their feedback on. And and outside of the the commission members for whom, do you have any insights from other partners that you're working with on on how some of that occurs?
Yeah, absolutely. It's. It's a lot about being creative with leveraging current channels of communication like. Like Mark mentioned, so great opportunities are, for instance, it starts small. If someone. Might be asking you on the Facebook page, hey, what is going on on Main Street? I'm seeing a lot of work going on over there. Now, we know that while. Not everyone is actually posting on social media, a lot of people do read the comments and the interaction that is happening. So it's a great opportunity that we've noticed for cities and partners to be able to, you know, link over there to the project that is actually happening. Well, guess what? There's a certain timeline, we there's thought behind this specific project that you're working on and not only that person. Is educated about what's happening, but the people around him or her. Who saw the comment and saw the interaction are now funneled into that into that platform. Some of the other ways that we see people in cities share and spread the word are through existing, you know, mailings or events. We have a new sharing, sharing hub that I will share very quickly that. We aim to make it very easy for cities to put these together into. Pieces of communication. So if it's creating QR codes for your mailing bases, if it's creating widgets. Or downloading a subscribers list from the people who have, you know, signed up to hear for hear more, sign up for notifications. So it doesn't happen all right away. But it starts and trickles and it turns into a snowball after a laugh, if that makes sense.
Okay, I think I was just, can I can I come back? And I appreciate that. I I guess what I'm trying to understand is whether it's really worth the twelve thousand. That's where it gives me heartburn and, you know, I'm not an internet genius, obviously. But I have created a couple of different websites over the past year or so that have mechanisms like this that have. Ways for you to to type in comments and vote on things and and it obviously didn't cost us anywhere near twelve thousand dollars to put those websites together. So. I that I have a little heartburn on that. And then I also have heartburn by the fact that. I feel like if we go ahead and do this and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna. Take advantage of this program. I don't feel like we can back out after a year or two as. As for whom indicated, I think it's something we've got to be committed to for numerous years, which of course increases the price tag for us as well.
I I would not disagree with that. And then to your benchmark that I mentioned was at a minimum to know what your what what your results are, right? So I and I'll open the floor to any of the commission members. If you've got any insights that you'd like to share regarding the overall engagement question and how that would be. Enhanced regardless of whether or not there's a platform or not.
Uh, yeah, so my name is Aaron Asmus. I'm one of the Community Engagement Commissioners. And just from a background perspective, a lot of my personal work is in engaging with communities and constituents. I'll say, you know, the tool itself. Is is a piece of the puzzle that will allow the city to better engage. It's it needs to be part of a multifaceted approach. And a thoughtful approach of actually engaging with constituents differently. You know, having a website that's, you know, different or, you know, using Survey Monkey or other tools like that while they're available and may cost less. Ultimately, it really boils down to creating a platform and an ability to engage with constituents in a wide variety of areas and projects. Not just singling one out and and allowing them to easily navigate what that looks like, you know, current city website. Aside, you know, when you look at the options and the availability of what some of the platforms that whom showed us. Gives us that ability. It allows the not just the Community Engagement Commission, but allows the city more broadly to engage with constituents effectively. Share information, be transparent, actually gather feedback effectively and share that feedback in more real time. And ultimately, I think it's to me, I feel like a lot of what the platform gives the city is allows a change in mindset. You know, it shifts from going, we're going to be passive in accepting feedback, meaning, and I will say passive saying, come to a council meeting. That's passive because you're not proactively trying to actually engage with the community. This is a way to actually have a tool to actively engage with constituents, but it needs to be part of a broader platform and part of a broader messaging strategy, you know, from. Not just, you know, social media, Facebook, whatever else some might be going on, but then you also look at marketing strategies that can get tied to it. You know, we talk about mailers and postcards and other things of as far as ways of reaching people that aren't on social media, you know, there's a variety of opportunities to be able to do that. And for Mark and his team at the city, from a staffing perspective, to have the tools and you guys as city city council members to have the resources and the information in front of you. It it could drastically change the community for the better. To me, I I understand your point about the twelve thousand dollars. I think the twelve thousand dollars a drop is nothing compared to what the benefits could be long term for the city. And being able to set up when you talk about long term strategic plans and being able to gauge community members effectively. This could be a great way to do that in a really proactive and streamlined fashion.
Yeah.
I can follow up.
Sure.
Chris's questions is the same one that I've had. I don't care that much in terms of the what the cost is if we're going to have benefit from it. If you can answer from your perspective, because it sounds like you're very cruel on this. Is how is it going to engage more citizens? Now, what I heard from A to C is exactly where I was. I was going to go A to Z. Because we do have some direct engagement, the farmer's market and other places are right, you know, where we do that. But and I think the surveys on this, like if we were to have a survey where the citizens were to do that exercise and understand, but if it's the same. Let's say fifty. It'll be five people that are actually doing it, right? Then, yeah, they'll be more engaged, we'll be hearing from them. But my question is, in terms of quantity, how are we going to reach? More of our own citizens. More of our own citizens. And then when we have surveys that are for visitors and, uh, I would even think something like Wintergill, uh. Um, could use this. And then if I can do a follow-up, maybe since you're the expert in this field. Will the Citizen Engagement Commission be able to help with this? Or will staff, will this add more work? For Kyle to get the information to Zen City to put out and then to get real-time results or? Uh. Jim, if it has to do with roads and some other things, so if you can help me with that.
Do you want to touch on that piece?
Sure. Um, and so, yeah, that's a great question. And so. Whether, whether it's the Zen City platform or no platform. Or something else, uh, the, the. City staff is going to have to collaborate with the service providers directly in order to be able to. Understand what question needs to be asked and how the input needs to be derived in order to. Add value to the decision-making. And so whether we have a platform or not a platform, David, uh, is going to be working with those. Department heads and partners who provide service to be able to figure out how to. Solicit that input, gather it, analyze it and use it for decision-making. And so. What I would say from a platform perspective is the importance from, from our perspective as staff is that we want something that is. Easy to use. It's got an interface that allows for it to be flexible and modifiable. And then from a, a. An end user standpoint, when we're piping this out for the community use, we want that experience to be a, a positive. It, it doesn't need to be something that's very difficult to understand and know what I'm asking so I can provide my feedback. And so. Those are the things really that we're looking at. And so, um, I, I would then. Uh, you know, ask Aaron or anyone else from the commission to provide any additional insights from your perspective as, as far as. The, the commission on how we plan to go about getting more people involved.
Actually, I've got a follow-up for you. Maybe as I'm hearing you say this, David's gonna be the conduit from the, say, the directors to the, to the citizens. How, how do you envision that working? So that it's not more work for the directors and other staff.
Interacting with other staff and he's having given the information, but. There is a lot of activities, a lot of initiatives going on that the public does, we began talking about. As part of our role in communicating that to them, the time needs to be made. With myself and other staff to. And tell me about this whole project. Tell me about this expansion, lots of other projects. Tell me about this new. Public event activity we want to put together. How can we get? Uh, public feedback as far as what kind of events and activities we wanted this stuff.
So will you be taking it to the Citizen Engagement Commission to do some of that as well?
In collaboration, yes, that's part of what this, that this group is about.
And, and, and I would expand that include, to include other commissions as well, depending on what the issue is, but. Um, and, and, and I'll add some additional con, context to David's comments. Right now, if, if someone wants to gain some insight from the community and we want to design a survey that we're using. Uh, and, and email or Microsoft Exchange to deliver to a group of folks. We're, we're having to put the time and energy into developing that content right now. And so. It would be no different using this platform or any other. The advantage that this would give us or something like this would give us. Is the ability to collect those, uh, pieces of feedback and, and have access to them forever. To be able to compare them over time so that we're not starting from scratch every time we have a new opportunity to engage.
That's brilliant. Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Dan.
I'm gonna ask Fuhum to answer that one.
Could we just repeat the question, please?
Does the, um, does, does the ask in the prize include a named number of hours of professional services to support the implementation?
No, because we have unlimited support for our clients. And support means. If there's training needed, if there's. Our team comprises of. A lot of people came from, um. You know, public administration. So a lot of people who have gone through some of these exercises. And at the same time. Our cities and clients have access to more than three hundred other local governments who may be working on something similar. So it's not just dealing with the technicality of the platform. But it's a city manager or leader or com- commission member coming up, coming to us and says. Hey, is, is there anyone else who's working on Project X? And they go fetch and do the research and bring them so they don't have to reinvent the wheels. And basically base the best practices off of someone who's already done that.
But we would have, Fuhum confirmed, we would have a, let's call it a client relationship manager assigned to our account, correct?
Yes, we call it Client Success Manager, correct?
Great. Um, I'm enthusiastic to the nature of the solution and specifically because it creates another opportunity for nature. Um, I also want to recognize the cost basis of the solution is not, in my opinion, beyond the means of the city. Uh, I'll recognize that one of the motors we're gonna buy tonight will be five, six years in each pocket. So I recognize that any amount of effort and energy that we can put as resources to get contribution or. Uh, is truly of work. Um, I very much appreciate, uh, recognizing it as a component. At kind of a greater stretch, the ability to put this in line and complement to, um, a lot of things around that. Question regarding technical, um, it looks like as a. For me to contribute to a discussion, I'm like a user, you can log in or something like that, right?
Was the question if you, if you need a login?
Yeah, I've heard from demonstrations that I would need to participate. Either in responding to a survey or contributing to a discussion as a unique identified user. Does that sound right?
Yeah, you will be identified as a unique user. You will not have to create a user. And the goal behind it was to lower the barrier for participation once again.
Okay. So at no point, for example, in the interaction, am I going to be asked to provide a username or password or anything like that?
Correct.
Uh, all right, um, and then a not, a last technical question. We, we, we live in a jurisdiction with an Open Public Records Act. Which requires us to be able to divulge every piece of information ever contributed into the platform. What does that look like?
We comply with, uh, Public Information Acts as. Uh, demonstrate from our partnership with other Washington state, uh, clients and partners that we work with. Um, again, Liberty Lake, uh, sorry, uh, uh. Airway Heights is the, the latest of them, but we have several other Washington state, uh, clients that we work with. So we had to provide the same compliance. So yes, we do comply with Washington state regulations.
I'll buy that.
And, and I saw Councilmember Kurtz, and, and then we'll go to Councilmember Ben Orman and then back over to.
Let me get one in here if I can. After there.
Sure, okay.
Um, a couple of comments and then a couple of questions, um, related to the cost. I think one of the platforms that we looked at and demoed with the council. It's been almost two years now, Thought Exchange, was I think sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, so as, as a comparison for, um, a product in the same field, um, there's a distinct difference in the cost. Um, regarding the question about, um, staff time, one of the reasons we added, um, David's position into the budget. Um, last year was, this was part of it, um, the anticipation of the Community Engagement Commission. Um, the anticipation of the workload that would need to be, um, ingested into the city to produce the work. Um, so that's part of the reason that David is here, um, and I'm not David's boss, but I mean, that's, um, the gist of, uh, one of the reasons that he's here. Um. One of the questions that I had, um, was around how many, how many projects can we put out there per year as there's a cap on? How many different, um, engagements we are looking at?
So from Tile's perspective, how many are we allowed to display?
Sure, we don't have a limit on the number of projects and engagements that a city can have.
Okay, thanks, Fuhum. Um, the other question that I had was around. Whose role would it be to develop the content? Um, and is there support for developing the questions that can be engaging? I saw. Um, just a lot of different, um, metrics and, um, radio buttons versus. Um, pie graphs versus, there were a lot of different ways to get the information. Um, but who develops the questions? Is that somebody from the city or is that something they do in consultation with, um, Zen City?
The question is to me, yes. So we do work in concert with city leadership to develop questions, although with time, we've developed enough. Expertise to build templates of questionnaires for different types of projects and engagements that you want to learn more about.
Um, and then my last question was kind of similar to, um, Councilmember Cargill's. It was around, um, the marketing piece. And then after hearing from, um, Aaron and then also hearing a little bit about kind of essentially the crowdsourcing that's available. Um, through the community of users of the platform, um, it, it seems like, I, I feel like when we, when we, um. Put the Community Engagement Commission into play and prove the ordinance, this was just one piece of it. This was that one of their very first tasks. And then the rest of it was, um, finding ways to engage the community. So I don't feel like. This is the one and done, um, the only solution. I think that there is gonna be some creativity needed from city and everybody else. To figure out the best way to reach the silent people in our community, um, and people who again are not on computers. Uh, but how can we engage with businesses to have QR codes if we have a certain topic coming up? Um, how can we use some of the resources? How can we develop some new resources, um, to continue to try to engage, um, as many people as we can? Knowing that not everybody is going to engage with us either. Um, but, um. I'm excited about the idea of this. Um, I was excited to see the demo today, see what the product looks like, see what our capacity is, um, what some of the. Potentials, um, engagements can look like. Um, and I'd be excited to move forward and give this a try and, and see. Um, I, I think that the biggest change is again from that, um, transactional, um. Government telling you what they've done or what they're doing to getting the input from residents. And that was kind of the whole goal of the, the commission. It's been something that we have all talked about, really wanting to have is community engagement and hearings so we can make good informed decisions. Um, and so, um, if not this, I don't know where we start, but I think that this is a good starting point. Um, it is a, a low-cost point. Uh, and we have other, um, cities around us that are using the product too.
Councilmember Ben Orman.
You know, uh, we used to do this all by hand twenty years ago. Um, as I said on two thousand and three comp plan. So to have something at your fingertips to get out to the public is amazing. Uh, I like it. The annual cost I'm not concerned with. And that's basically what you'd look for in a newsletter, and this takes care of all of it. But we're a unique community. We're master planned. And we have a lot of plans that we need to get the word out because it's coming. Um. I think with our awesome staff. And our community engagement, this is a win-win.
Uh, I don't have any questions. The most of mine have already been answered, just some comments, I guess. Um, I, I see the value in the program. Uh, I too am not super concerned about the annual price. Um, versus what it has to offer. Um, but my concerns. From the previous meeting about this discussion haven't changed, I mean, based on what I've heard tonight, and that is. Um. And correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but all of this is what city website driven. That's where you go to get to this program. Is that correct? It's not a phone app. It's not a. It, it has somehow, you have to get channeled to our website to participate. Is that true?
So for whom, I'm gonna rely on you to provide the, the technical answer there, and then I'll, I'll provide some context if you don't mind.
Our platform is web-based, but phone-responsive. While other websites could be really funky when it comes to showing the results or having the engagements. If I pick up my phone and hit a link and find this engagement hub. Our engagement hub is going to be a lot more responsive on a mobile phone. So. It is web-based, but mobile-responsive unlike many other, uh, softwares that attempt to do the same.
Somebody could participate without going to our website.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and, and just to provide just a little bit of extra context, when we talked about that wider strategy. That wider strategy would include ways for people to engage with this without going through our website, although that will always be a method. We wanna expand that, yeah.
Am I able to respond to that too? The, uh, the demo you saw, like the cities, uh, that Fuhum was showing, that was not the website of those cities. That was Zen City's. Web design. It was not directly tied to those websites from the city.
So, so one last comment. Uh, so again, I think it's a great product and I agree with what everybody has said so far positively about it. My hangup with it is, um, uh. When we get a result on a question. We're not gonna know if it's our residents or not. We're not gonna know if it's people from the Spokane Valley, if it's people from Pulse Falls, if it's people that used to live here ten years ago. We're not going to know. Um, and that concerns me, um, like any other survey that we send out. If it's only out on Facebook. It's such a small sample of our population that it bothers me to use it as a decision-making tool. So if we could find a way to improve that part of it, and so we knew. If five hundred people respond, that ninety-five percent of them live within our borders. Then that's one thing, but if we don't know that. Um, I mean, you know, Spokane Valley can be kind of sneaky sometimes. You never know what they might throw in the mix. Um. Just to, but you understand my point is, I, I wanna, uh, I wanna, like everybody, I wanna represent our citizens and our residents. And I, I love the tool. I just, I fear it may not be a true measure.
And can I, can I ask a follow-up, uh, question to what Phil was hitting on?
Sure.
Um, so I, I just had, uh, two requests if we go forward, uh, and I guess they're requests if we can do them. Can we brand this something? And then could we buy a domain? And have that domain be the brand that leads to the platform? So in other words, let's say it's. I don't know, Liberty Lake Listens or something. And so we buy the website libertylakelessens.com or dot org or whatever. And then, um, on the website, which links to the. Platform, it has a logo that David and his team can come up with. Uh, that says Liberty Lake Listens, and it's basically a way to make it so that people don't have to go through the city website. They can go to a separate website. We could also get onto social media and we could boost the heck out of that website. To get people to, to chime in. I guess those are the questions that I had based on, uh, what Phil was saying.
So that's a good question. So our domain can be customized to, am I engage, uh. My engage, uh, you know, Liberty Lake, um, and the branding. We try to make things as consistent as possible. So, yes, people can come visit and it's going to be its own platform. But also to provide some consistency in terms of the branding between what you have on your, on your website. And on your Zen City Engage platform. Uh, you have the say in terms of the, the design. So that's part of the onboarding process is thinking what would it look like both from a domain perspective and also the design.
Great. And, and I think that's a critical component of it because, uh, to me, if, if somebody is gonna get involved who's never gotten involved in giving us feedback. It's gonna be because they heard us marketing it or they heard something, uh, about this platform. They won't necessarily know what Zen City means. So to the extent that we can. Steer them away from using that terminology and back to Liberty Lake, whatever. Um, I, I just think that would be a better, better way to do it.
So it sounds like we have some flexibility there that we can explore.
By doing that, can you identify the location of the participant?
So what you could do on social media, as David knows, is we could, we could, um, for instance, on Facebook, we could boot. Let's say we're doing a survey on the strategic plan or the comp plan or whatever. Uh, we can boost it just in a five-mile radius of Liberty Lake. Or a ten-mile radius. And then we know that basically everyone who's seen that ad to go to this website is coming from that. Ten or five mile radius. Now, that's, I mean, we're still gonna get probably some Otis Orchards folks and maybe.
Right.
The, the east part of the valley, but. Be pretty, pretty close.
Better than not.
Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yeah, and just to touch on that, I think it's really just a semantics thing because we're going to have links on social media. We're going to have QR codes. So. I I don't think, I think it's going to be almost never that anybody has to type in Zen city dot Liberty Lake dot, you know. So I don't think that's that's going to be too much of an issue. The thing that I'm really liking about this platform and this opportunity is ultimately, we're talking about. Friction, right? The the less friction there is to to engage individuals, the more likely they are to participate. So we are wherever the people are. So if they're on social media, if they're coming to the farmer's market. All they have to do is scan a QR code or somebody standing there at the farmer's market with an iPad saying, hey, you want to participate? And you click the buttons for them. Uh, I think um. This highly reduces that friction. And also I think um. Uh, when we're talking about who's going to engage, again, everybody in the middle who, you know, you're always going to hear from. The loud people who are angry or happy, right? Those are the people you're normally going to hear from. Uh, as a general rule, because they're going to take the effort, they're going to go through the effort of calling city hall or coming to a city council meeting. Everybody else in the middle, those are the ones that are the hardest to reach because they're they're kind of neutral. They might lean this way or lean that way. As far as what their opinion is on a project. So I I think this, this is great. I think also the data coming in. Is going to be actionable rather than anecdotal. I think a lot of stuff that we might normally collect. You know, talking to people at a farmer's market. Um, we we don't necessarily, can't necessarily make a decision on what one person said about. Something. So if we can kind of conglomerate all that information, I think that's awesome. Um, and then, yeah, I guess my my biggest concern is, is it representative of the actual residents? But again, what's the alternative? You know, right now we don't have something that's bringing all those responses in. So yes, of course, we're going to get some responses outside of the city, but. Overall, I don't think a lot of citizens, uh, non-citizens are going to be participating on certain discussions. On others that maybe are more on a national level or something. Perhaps we're going to have to take those results with a grain of salt.
Well, and to that point, I think one of the benefits uh is. Plugging into the community of users to find out some of their lessons learned that they've already experienced and. Maybe apply some techniques that they've uh come up with to help. Narrow that down and and provide a a higher level of assurance for that. And that's absolutely something that we're committed to do.
Mark, one more question. Does the platform limit how many times you can vote? Or something or.
Is there a.
Yes, we have duplicate detection.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I guess just to follow up with that, though, if if you did have somebody at a farmer's market. Uh, with one iPad, is that, is that going to be an issue then? Because it's going to be pinging from the same IP address?
Right. So that's another example of implementing uh client feedback. Again, going into the. Uh, the fact that we are a fluid software that we gather. Feedback from our clients and implement them. So, yeah, we've had clients in the past who said, hey. Is there a way to do the same work only when we're doing it on an iPad in a farmer's market? So that's why we launched what's called the kiosk mode that is able to distinguish between each user.
That's awesome.
Well, with that, can we take a.
Can I just say one more quick comment? Um, just for, just to address the concerns as it relates to non-residents participating into the surveys. A lot of that participation as as far as broader participation as relates to the platform is going to boil down to. How staff, the community engagement commissions, city council actually executes it. So how those surveys and information is disseminated to, let's say, folks who are visiting the city of Liberty Lake. Is going to determine a lot that participation rate. So if we're focusing on farmer's markets, people are coming to. City council meetings, existing user base, user um uh databases that we are, that the city already has. Uh, using mailers to only city of Liberty Lake residents, those types of things. Eighty, ninety percent or more are going to be folks who physically live here. Um, obviously, if you change those strategies and say, hey, we're we're throwing it out on social media. Sure, you're going to get the folks that are going to randomly participate from outside of the target community. Um, but in some instances. When you guys look at broader pictures for the plan of Liberty Lake, you may want that participation from folks that are coming from outside of the community as well. And when you think about growing the business base for Liberty Lake. The residents, obviously, those are the ones that take the priority as far as trying to get their feedback. But there may be opportunities to engage with citizens from Spokane Valley, Otis Orchards. Uh, Airway Heights who visit the city for a variety of services and reasons who were that you still may want their feedback and input.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah.
So uh regarding next steps. Uh, do we have a consensus to bring this back as an action item at a at a future meeting?
Put it on each other.
Okay.
With that, we'll take five minute break.
Thanks, Bohum.
Thanks, Bohum.
Thank you for having me.
Can we bring the meeting to order, please? Please stand for the um invocation by Jed.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to gather together this evening as a community, as a, as a council and. We're grateful for the responsibilities that we have and um for. Uh, the blessing it is to live in this area. We're so thankful for all the um. City staff and um everyone who works together here in this community to make it a better place to live and. And we pray that thou will bless us as we uh counsel together that we can come to uh great solutions for our city. And for the benefit of of those living here and these blessings and favors we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right, thank you. Um, for everybody that is here tonight, obviously, the mayor is um. Uh, not going to be attending. She's just not feeling well tonight. You're stuck with me, sorry. Um, okay, so we'll take our uh 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 roll call. Uh, Cargill, ultimate McCargill.
Here, present.
Kurtz.
Present.
Van Orman.
Here.
Collier, here. Spencer.
Present.
Mr. Stolberg.
Here.
Mr. Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. Uh, ready.
I am here. I'm just listening.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Uh, okay, let's move on to our agenda approval. Have one item to uh remove from tonight's um agenda. Uh, only because the mayor wanted to participate in the discussion and that is item nine nine B, the Code of Ethics Social Media Policy. So. Uh, make a motion to re- to amend the code of the agenda, removing nine B. There's a second.
Seconded.
Second by Wendy Van Orman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Citizen comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, back up. Uh, so at this time, we'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All right, any uh discussion?
Can I ask a a quick question? Maybe it's for Sean. Sean, uh, can you give us an update on where we stand with the library ordinance that we were discussing? And why it's not on tonight versus in a couple of weeks?
Um, I mean, maybe Mark might know that better. I don't know specifics. I know that there was some additional discussion, I think that was ongoing. I don't know the extent of it. Um, but it was going to be for a later meeting. So, yeah, so the Library Board of Trustees has a meeting uh that will occur between now and the next council meeting. And so the opportunity to give them a chance to. And discuss it at their next meeting and then come uh was was the intent. So it'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for catching me on that. All right, move on to citizen comments. If you state your name and your uh residence status, that'd be great. Give you three minutes. Uh, let's see here. Uh, first up is Joe Frank.
Uh, my name is Joe Frank and I am a resident uh the city of Liberty Lake. Um, I'm here with the Greenstone. And I'm here to tonight to talk about the recently approved parking code changes to the River District SAP. In preparation tonight, I sent a written statement to the council. Uh, of what we believe took place during the recent vote on this matter. Uh, we're here tonight to answer any questions you guys might have. Um, regarding the document that we sent over. And in the end, we're asking, we're hoping that a council will consider taking action to reconsider their vote on that matter. We ask that the council support the Plan Commission's recommendations to exclude these recent parking code changes to the River District SAP.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Well, not normally during citizen comment, but. So again.
How do we do the, what's the next step for us?
I would say we'll discuss it when we uh, we talk about our upcoming agenda items. There. We're just getting ready to write it down, so. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Next up, we have Catherine Atkins.
Catherine Lynn Atkins, I'm a resident in Rocky Hill Park. And I'd like to address the proposed amending of ordinance one nineteen to allow the city council to have approval over the library policies and procedures. In reviewing your workshop last month and the meetings, it seems that you've spent a great deal of time. Researching and discussing what the ordinances and the RCWs allow the council to do. However, I heard nothing about what you should do. Have you spent time on why almost every other library, municipal or not? Has a library board as the decision-making branch without oversight? Have you reviewed what the American Library Association recommends in the Library Bill of Rights? One question that I heard from council members was, we approve the policy and procedures of all the other departments of the city. Why not the library? Well, I believe it was pointed out that you do not, in fact, approve all the other departments. The police department is an exception and for good reason. I believe the library is also exempted for a good reason. If the city has the ability to censor or alter library policy. It amounts to a violation of First Amendment rights and our intellectual freedom for our citizens. There are examples where cities have made changes to library policies and been brought to the federal courts and the courts found against the cities. The library board is the subject matter expert on what the policies and services should be. They have received extensive training and are guided by the American Library Association's Guidelines on Policy. The board is immersed in library policy. Why would you not defer to them? Are you more knowledgeable on the topic? I think if you're being honest with yourselves, you have to answer that question, no. The argument was brought that the library board is not elected to their positions. Well, this is as it should be. It sets them apart from political pressures. Governments have established library boards for a specific reason. It is because elected officials wish to appeal to the broadest number of citizens. You would be subject to the political pressure when people don't like the books or the services that the library has. On the other hand, the library board and the director are charged with balancing competing interests. And to avoid favoring the majority at the expense of our individual rights. In closing, I would ask that you keep the approval of policies and services regarding intellectual freedom. Collection policy and book challenges under the library board and its director. And not under a political body such as yourselves, the city council. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, right. Next up is Karen Canfield, please.
Good evening. I'm Karen Canfield. I also live in Liberty Lake. I'm here to address, thank you very much. An issue that could harm users of our library. With the goal of convincing the council not to change the city ordinance one one nine. I will be quoting four documents. First. From the library's collection development policy, quote. Liberty Lake Municipal Libraries Board of Trustees recognizes that there are individuals and groups with diverse interests. Backgrounds, ages and needs. And the library was created to serve all of the people within the community. Parents and guardians have the right and responsibility to guide and direct. The use of the library collection for their own minor children. Maria Botman, I was hoping she'd be here, addressed this very issue in her remarks at a recent city council meeting. Thank you, Maria. Quoting again, the Board of Trustees recognizes that the library is a community resource. For people of all ages, races, creeds, national origin, sexual orientation. And the political and social views. A variety of viewpoints are represented in the library collection. And the library upholds the right of the individual. To obtain information, though the content may be controversial, unorthodox. Or unacceptable to others. Quoting now from the American Library Association. The freedom to read is essential to our democracy. It is protected by the Constitution and yet it is continually under attack. To snipe every non-conformist idea. Would mark the end of the democratic process. And it is wrong that what one thinks and what one can read. Should be confined to what another thinks. In a free society, individuals are free to determine for themselves what they wish to read. No group has the right to take the law. Into their own hands to impose its own concept of morality. Upon other members of a democratic society. Next, a quote from the Library Bill of Rights. Books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information and enlightenment of all. People the library serves.
Sorry, Karen, I'll have to stop you there. Your three minutes is up. Sorry.
Let me tell you, thank you for coming. Stay warm, stay safe and read a book.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Uh, any other comments on Zoom? Yes. Tim Olson, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. On October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Liberty Lake Municipal Library Board of Trustees gave their quarterly report to the city council. We shared some very positive news with a lot of utilization of the library services and programs. We had double-digit gains in utilization by our community. We completed many projects as requested by the community from the assessments in the past. Unfortunately, a specific, a specific number, number of members of our city council largely ignored these facts. Some of these city council members chose to vilify the Board of Trustees and the library staff after an exhaustive. Six-month process of rewriting our policies to have a fair treatment for all of our citizens in the city. Unfortunately, this was only the beginning of the attacks. Do we need to remind some of these council members that the oath they took? Primarily upholding the Constitution of the United States, as was mentioned earlier. The city council had absolutely no comment on the report out of the trustees on October eighteenth. They only focused on their power. They seem to think they lost something, but they never had it. What's their motive? What do these ulterior moves reflect? And the, do these reflect the rights of our citizens? In reality, the city council has the final word on anything that goes through any department within the city. Through a process, they can fire staff members like the librarian or by removing trustees. So the city council with the mayor has approved the hiring of a librarian. They've also approved the library trustees. So what has happened? How much time are the city council members really going to spend on the important issues on the library? Which members are familiar with the Liberty Lake or the Library Bill of Rights or the Freedom to Read statement? How many of our city council members have a masters in library science as our staff does? The library's trustees have so much positive feedback from the community on our policies, especially the most recent book challenge. Does this mean anything to the city council at all? The very citizens you are representing. Does this mean anything to the city council at all? The very citizens you are representing? How many have really come forward to say that they think the city council needs more power over these types of issues? If changes are made to this ordinance, Liberty Lake may be the only city in the state of Washington to have the city council involved in policies like book reconsideration policies. How disheartening that some members of our city council didn't even have a question or comment for the trustees on their very positive report in October. They didn't have a comment on the huge progress that's been made by this library, which is the center of our community. On November first, council member Spencer stated correctly, if we're talking about elected officials or appointed individuals. If our best interest of the community is not our number one priority, we don't deserve to be in public service, period. I couldn't agree with him more. At the same meeting, Mr. Spencer said he believed that the actions taken by the trustees were unethical. The library board of trustees followed standard guidelines from case law and many other libraries across the country. The trustees are volunteers. Just because you don't like the decisions made by that group that you approve doesn't make them unethical. I'm opposed to any changes to the ordinance one nineteen in the city of Liberty Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else on Zoom? DG Garcia, please. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Mayor Protim, residents, and anyone in the room. It is so apropos that I am speaking today, being one of the days of African-American history. I am DG Garcia and I am an independent-minded resident of Liberty Lake. And I oppose any ordinance that would strengthen a government to take over where it is already. In charge of making the final decisions, but to take complete charge. By calling the stewards who work effortlessly incompetent, not capable. And perhaps in their minds, failures. Liberty Lake has once again, some of our members have failed to rise to the occasion. And present themselves in the best light. And once again, we have fallen short. I do thank Member Dunn, Solberg, and Kurtz. Who look deeper than their very noses to see what is important. And as we look at government overreach in many cases. When Republicans and some Democrats alike say smaller government is best. And when Republicans and some Democrats say we're going to do everything we can to stay out. As much as we can and allow our volunteers to do what they do best. What happens? They turn a blind eye to their very own promise. What if someone comes forward and says they want to remove the Bible from the library? What do we do then? Who is going to be responsible? Who makes that decision? We must all lean on our own personal morals. But what is more important is to not have citizens acquiesce their sovereignty. To their government. And to ensure that the government remembers an important fact. And that fact is, you are our employees. You work for us. And it does not have to take an election to resolve all that might ail us. There are other ways to make the playing feel even. To disparage a board of trustees in order to make a point is not Christian-like. It is not what he would do. And so I say, be cautious in your deliberations. Think harder about the community and not yourselves. Think about what you may be taking on that is in direct conflict on what you should do. I thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, DG.
Thanks.
Do you have anybody else? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move right along with our agenda then. We have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations. Uh, item, agenda item eight, reports and inquiries, city council. Councilmember Solberg, please.
While we're talking about the library, please, everybody, whether you're online or you're here. You got three days left for the Valentine's Day gift baskets fundraiser from the Friends of the Library to the library. Uh, if you do not have it, you've got a QR code right here. Text me a message and I'll send it to you. Get your bids in. It's a, it's a great cause and it's a lot of fun. And these baskets. Uh, were put together with a lot of love.
Nice. Yeah, I'll take a crack at it. Um, so the Spokane Transit Authority met in a general board meeting on the nineteenth. Um, recognizing new and changed membership. Um, small cities' representation for the STA board now includes Liberty Lake as the voting member. Prior work in the prior year, we were, I was ex officio. Um, good news on the part of STA, uh, the good news, the Central City Line is on schedule and under budget. So the purple buses, you may have been seen cruising the city streets in Spokane and other areas are all battery electric. Uh, and a real proud moment for that agency to bring that together, that project together. Uh, the staff took the rest of the board meeting time to explain how, where they previously had projected a twelve percent service increase level. That is additional routes or expanded routes. They're only going to be able to move a six percent increase level due to staffing considerations. That agency is struggling right now to hire successfully, to be able to staff, to be able to provide the services that the people have asked for. So just a recognition out there as we, you know, yeah, hiring's tough. If anybody's looking for a job, the bus drivers are needed. Um, the quadrennial review, it's called, was performed and what that did was say, hey, regarding our census tracts and populations within the county. Is there any shifts in the participation of the board membership? It has not. Uh, just to remind everybody, uh, the city of Spokane has four voting members. The county has two, the valley has two, and small cities aggregated together has one. That's me. Um, on a fun note, for those of us who went to the Ag Show today. Uh, Dr. Art Douglas, uh, reports in the weather forecast that, um, our spring will be colder but drier than normal. As opposed to last year. And it was fun to see, uh, one of our own Paul Puig, uh, board chair, I think, for our farmer's market out there, seeing all the interesting. Mechanisms and gizmos for the farmers. And then I just last report for everybody that ballots are due on the fourteenth, so support the local fire department and vote for the maintenance operations lobby. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Good. All right, we'll move right along to the mayor's report. Unfortunately, I don't, she didn't have anything she wanted me to share. Um, we just hope she gets better soon. So thank you, mayor. Unless you have something you want to share, I know you're out there.
So I've got an article.
Cover it.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, city administrative report.
All right, thank you, uh, Mayor Protim, members of the city council, members of our viewing audience. Um, so the item that the, uh, the mayor was, was speaking of is. Uh, item one A on my report, the legislative session. Uh, as you know, she and I traveled to Olympia with the Greater Spokane Inc. and a delegation. Uh, that were, uh, there to advocate for that legislative, um, set of priorities. And so we were able over about two days to meet with, uh, almost fifteen legislators and one member of the governor's staff. And, you know, conversations took many, uh, many angles, many avenues, got a lot of opportunity to. Hear from them, provide them feedback, hear their responses to that feedback. And some of the major themes that came up during those two days. Uh, as you can imagine, as you've seen, some of the bills that have been introduced are housing, workforce, behavioral health, transportation. Uh, transit-oriented development and streamlining of building permit processes across the state. Uh, crime, apparently the state of Washington, I didn't realize this until, uh, we, we heard this, has the lowest law enforcement. Uh, number of law enforcement officers per capita in the United States. That was news to me. Uh, focus on K through twelve education. And then how, in, in particular, all of these things that I've just mentioned are interconnected. There's not. One of them that stands out alone that doesn't affect the others. Um, and then there was some specific discussion about the North Spokane Corridor. And how it was the GSI's, uh, priority for that not to be delayed, funding for that not to be delayed. And we heard a lot of, I'm committed for it not to be delayed. Uh, that's a great suggestion. We're going to consider that. We heard a lot of that kind of feedback. Um, and so we'll just have to see how that plays out as the session moves on. Um, are there, are there any questions regarding the, the GSI fly-in? I've got some news about another opportunity to get out there, but regarding the GSI fly-in before I move on. Okay, uh, moving on and, and chief, I'm going to bring you up on this one. Moving on to the Association of Washington City's City Action Days. Which is coming up on February fourteenth to sixteenth. This is another opportunity to go and advocate with another group. Um, many of you got, or all of you got the AWC Legislative Priority folders at some point in the past and it lists their five. Uh, priorities. Uh, and I also sent out an email. It was either yesterday or today regarding a call to action that they've made regarding police pursuits. And, um, and, and you've seen, hopefully you've seen that email, and if you choose to take action, great. But I, I, I've invited Chief Simmons to come because this is also a priority of the. Association of Washington Sheriffs and, and Police Chiefs Organization. And so if you have any comments you'd like to add to that, chief, feel free.
Yeah, that should be a prior, uh, priority of, uh, every, everyone in the state, both the government and, and citizens. Um, the twenty twenty legislation, um, the pursuit legislation, there were many negative, many negative consequences to that legislation. Um, it just basically gave criminals a get out of jail free card. Um, the lights come on and they don't stop. And it is absolutely appalling. Just during my shift to listen to the radio and listen to the State Patrol and the city of Spokane and the city of Spokane Valley. Repeatedly attempt to stop individuals who are either involved in crimes or suspected. Of being involved in crimes and. They just don't stop. Um, as a matter of fact, yesterday, uh, there was a comment made on our radio channel in the valley, um, after, uh. A young man had victimized half of a certain important portion of the valley. Um, all night in a stolen vehicle, uh, breaking into cars, committing all sorts of crimes. Um, and he was going twenty miles per hour and wouldn't stop, and they just stopped following him. And the comment was made, I wish we could do something to stop people from committing crimes. And that's, that's where we've got it. Um, so it's extremely important, um, that this is addressed, that, um, both the House and the Senate's. Stop stalling on this. Um, there's two identical bills, companion bills, both one in the House and one in the Senate. They're both identical. Um, and, um, I read both bills. I don't know if you all have a chance. I have a copy of it here. If you haven't had a chance to read it, and I believe the changes are reasonable. I believe the changes are needed. Um, I believe they're good changes and they will still protect the public while giving us the authority and the ability to, um, to pursue when needed. Um, so, um. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm able to answer those hopefully, but this is something that I wish I would have been present today. Um, in Olympia to, to speak on, but my schedule wouldn't allow it. So I'm here for you asking that you speak up, please.
Can I just make one, one comment?
Absolutely.
Um, I, I just want to echo everything that the chief, uh, said. Um, unfortunately, I, I'd heard this morning from half of the four corners of leadership. Uh, on a press conference that they were really concerned as of today that it was not even going to make it to the floor. So, that, that's a good reminder from the chief that we all need to be involved.
There needs to be a realization that there's been an increased danger to the public, increased danger to the public. Because the number of vehicles fleeing now, without the ability to stop. The person has increased exponentially regardless of. Um, what some of the so-called experts are saying, uh, regarding there not being any data. There's plenty of data. There's plenty of data. The data is there. Not ignoring the data is, is going to be the key. So.
Thanks, chief. And so not attempting to sway to one side or the other. I, I just want to remind you that, uh, to sign on to AWC's letter, there's a deadline of February eighth, so keep that in mind if you have an interest. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, I was just going to comment, uh, because I did sign on to that letter. Um, I totally support, uh, those, those bills. Um, I guess my question is just kind of in, in talking about this, uh, what we had in the workshop earlier. Is it, it, is it really only looking for elected officials signing on to stuff like that? Or would that be something that we could use in the future to kind of add a little bit more power? Um, amongst the different cities, you know, in, in the state. Uh, because I, I would think that if you got the general consensus from most citizens, that's our most important. Uh, that's the most important thing that, that we have as a top priority for our government is public safety. So, um, I would think that we could gather that data and send a little larger package to Olympia rather than. Just a few elected officials. So I'm just curious as to how that could kind of work in, in, uh, union.
You could certainly use the platform to help inform a legislative priority. Uh, package that you would, that the city council would form, and that can be done, you know, anywhere. Um, but certainly, certainly that can be done, yes.
To that same end, is there anything that we can do today, um, to? Um, inform the public about signing on to that or, um, contacting the legislators?
Uh, we, we can, so, so individuals at any time can contact their legislators and, and let them know. You know, their, their positions on one thing or another. So absolutely, that can be done at any time and, and we can, uh, put some information out. Uh, on the city's social media to remind people of that. Um, with respect to the city council, I would say the best thing right now is, is signing on if you're interested to the AWC's letter.
Yeah, and I did that today.
Yeah.
One more question. Um, would it be appropriate, assuming that we can, uh, have this bill survive cutoff or one of the bills survive cutoff? Um, to do, uh, a city proclamation or something of that sort?
Um, I would say that following our general rules of proclamations, that would be within the pale. And, and so, um, if that was a, an interest of the council, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can bring, bring it back to the, um, February. What day is it meeting? Twenty-second? Twenty-first? Twenty-first. Um, meeting as just a, uh. Feeling of the, uh, consensus of, of the council.
Is that before the cutoff?
Well, maybe. It depends. I mean, nothing's ever officially dead, but I think the cutoff date is actually the eighteenth. Um, so we'll have a good indication at that time, but.
Right, yeah.
They can bring it back at any time if they wanted to.
Correct. So if, if council so chooses, absolutely, we could bring that forward as a proclamation.
Yep.
It's, is, is there, so not to. Not leading the meeting, right? But is there, is there a consensus that that is what needs to be done? Or does council desire staff to bring that forward as a proclamation?
Well, I, I guess my question would be, you, what you said, it hasn't left the floor. It may not leave the floor even, so.
May not get to the floor.
Get to the floor.
Yeah, but I mean, it's nothing, nothing's ever officially dead until April twenty-fourth at noon.
I certainly have no opposition in the rest of the council. Yeah, so I guess there you go.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And, and I just, one last thing I want to say is, I didn't mention this, but this has affected our agency as well. Uh, just, I mean, every week, there's at least one or two for us as well. Um, I've had him as the chief. Uh, we just had a big one with the state patrol, um, that you may have seen on Spokane News or the news. Um, just a couple of days ago, on failure, you know, um, and that, that person flipped off the police and decided they weren't going to stop. So, um, something needs to be, and they were extremely intoxicated. So something needs to be done. Thank you.
So I'm not sure who would write it, but if they could work with the chief on language, that'd be great.
We'd have to get a motion for that, do we?
No.
Yeah.
Thanks, Gentry. All right, uh, reminding city council and, and the viewing public that, uh, President's Day holiday is coming up on February twentieth. And so city hall and libraries, uh, going to be closed in observance of that. Uh, and this is, I, I think the third meeting this year already where we have a city council day after a holiday, so, uh. No reason to point that out other than it's an oddity. Um, city council strategy session coming up on March fourth. Uh, we are locking down a location right now, so hopefully within the next week or so, we'll be able to update that meeting invitation with a location. Uh, so you've got that. Um, we, we covered the public engagement next steps. I had that on there in case we needed to have a further discussion. Uh, but we can move to item number three, uh, Tree City USA twenty twenty-three designation. I don't know if you've had a chance yet to go. Down the hallway, but we've taken the opportunity to use some of that void wall space to hang up some of the plaques that have been in storage. And one of those plaques is the Tree City USA designation plaque. And we've had that designation for many years, going back to twenty, uh, two thousand and three. And so we've got it again, and I'm going to turn the floor of the, to Jen Camp to kind of brief you on that. Jen?
Yeah, thank you. Um, we actually took a bit of a hiatus through the COVID years. Um, in order to apply and qualify for that designation, there has to be a certain amount of money spent per capita. And during those, uh, years of COVID, we had some, uh, challenges with spending that money. Uh, but this year we were able to go back and, um, go through the application and qualify, and I. And I just received notice last week that we will again, uh, obtain the status for Tree City USA designation this year. Um, I want to say it's either the eighteenth or nineteenth year. Um, so yeah, it's, it's kind of a big deal. You'll see the signs around town that say Tree City USA. Um, but yeah, are there any questions or comments?
Jen, are we going to have another tree planting and?
Yes, we will have a tree planting, um, on Arbor Day sometime in April. Um, we'll do something at one of the parks, definitely.
And we would also, uh, give council, uh, advance notes. We'll be bringing a proclamation and, uh, before Arbor Day to codify all of this and, and make sure that it's, um, we're, we're accepting the designation so that we can use it um, in all of our advertising and, and communications and all that. Regarding, uh, Tree City USA, this is something that technically falls under the umbrella of the Parks and Arts Commission. And I want to use the opportunity, uh, that we're, uh, talking about it this evening to, uh, share with council, uh, some staff kudos that has, uh, come from the Chair of the Parks and Arts Commission. We got an email this afternoon and it really just goes into, uh, not, not a lot of detail, but enough uh, to share the commission's appreciation for the work that, that Jen Camp does as its staff liaison. And so there's really complimentary about the way that, uh, she liaisons with the group and keeps them on task and, uh, uh, want to share that information with Jen. Thank the Parks and Arts Commission as a whole. And, and specifically, uh, Chair Nancy Hill for sending us that information. So, uh, job well done, Jen, keep it up and, and thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Let's see, uh, an update regarding the Civil Service Commission. We have put out a call for applications. Uh, that is one of the commissions that, uh, I believe, uh, for, for lack of a better explanation, was a COVID casualty. It just kind of fell out of, um, out, out of meeting and so disbanded, uh, de facto. Uh, and so we are in an attempt to, to recommission that group. And we have put out an initial call and a follow-up call. And so now we're asking for your help to, uh, get the word out. Um, we don't have enough applications at this point to fill the commission, so we're still looking for, we need three. Um, and so we're still looking for qualified folks to, uh, apply to be members of that commission. So anything that you can do to assist, we appreciate. Um, and Kyle, do you want to update council real quick on the police collective bargaining agreement?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mark. Uh, so counsel, just a very brief update. Uh, so myself, Mark and our H R manager Heidi met with the newly formed Liberty Lake Police Guild last Monday to kick off, uh, new C B A discussions. And so a great meeting last Monday, we have another meeting planned, uh, for next Monday. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we will provide updates as those meetings unfold. And eventually we will have a buttoned up agreement for council consideration.
Any questions? All right, moving on, um, City Academy, this is something that, uh, we've talked quite a bit about internally as staff. Um, and wanted to bring it to your attention tonight, just so that, uh, because we, we've started going out and we've started talking to partners about participating, uh, and really bringing this to life. And so, um, it's time to brief council at a high level. Uh, we'll get much more detailed as we go forward. Uh, but this is one of those things that we talked about earlier as part of a wider strategy to engage the public and, and, and do more things to get in front of more people that may help get the word out and keep it sustained. And so this is, this is a concept that, that I think the city has actually looked into before. But it's certainly something that was on the, the mayor's list of priorities when, when I arrived. And so we've been looking at ways to, to, to bring this, uh, into being. And so we have targeted, uh, the eight weeks between the end of spring break and the start of summer break to have this first, uh, Liberty Lake City Academy. And really what this is, is an opportunity to probably bring fifteen to twenty Liberty Lake residents in to a classroom setting. Um, and have a, a really in-depth, behind-the-scenes, hands-on, uh, learning experience to, to get, uh, uh, an inside look into how the city makes decisions, allocates resources, uh, works with partners to deliver core services. And so this is something that not only will help that engagement overall, but it will also hopefully, um, help to kind of, uh, make new city leaders, right? So people then may become interested in becoming a board or commission member or potentially even running for city council. And so that's kind of the twofold goal is to e- expand that engagement reach, but also, um, kind of help identify and, and in some cases, train future city leaders. So we've talked with, uh, a, a Vista, we've talked with the Water and Sewer District, we've talked with the Fire Department. We've talked with, uh, W M and, and there are many more that we hope to bring in, uh, as our partners to have this, um, experience for, for residents. But at, at a very high level, that's kind of where we are. Again, between now and say mid-March, we're going to be looking to have, uh, folks register for this, so we know who we're dealing with. But we want to have that first cohort of folks be roughly fifteen to twenty. So again, asking for your help to get the word out, we'll be doing some, some more messaging and getting, uh, a, a very detailed message so that you can use that. But that's, that's something that's, that's coming up that we're really excited about and look forward to, uh, repeating, uh, up to two times a year. So maybe a, a spring and a fall offering. But large-scale goal is to increase that engagement and to train some future city leaders. And any questions that I can help answer at this point? Yes, sir.
Mark, will you also include, uh, ride-alongs with the police department as part of that academy?
So that would be something that is possible. We're going to have to figure out how best to use our time. Um, but the other thing that Chief and I talked about is possibly having a citizens' police academy that would be exclusively police. So there would absolutely be an opportunity to do ride-alongs and something like that. That's not what we're planning here, but it could be part of, part of an initial offering. So that's something we're going to have to figure out how to execute if we want to do that.
Yeah, we had citizens academies. I think the Spokane Police still does. Um, and did it numerous times every year and the benefit to having people understand was phenomenal and the feedback was excellent.
Well, they, a- around the country, if you, if you look at these things, these are some of the most popular programs that cities can offer is, is something like that. So yeah, we would be interested in, in learning more about that and possibly planning for one of those in the future. Any other questions? All right, uh, last item, we've talked about this before. Uh, we have actually convened a working group to look at options for bringing a revised camping ordinance back to city council and the kickoff meeting for that group is tomorrow morning. And so what I would expect to happen is over three to four get-togethers, um, we would be able to narrow down what that is going to be, what that recommendation is going to be. And then, uh, bring that before council as a proposal for a new camping ordinance. And so along the way, we'll be giving you updates, but I just wanted to let you know that that kickoff meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, so we're going to get started.
Are, are we recording that, Mark?
Uh, we had not planned on it, but we certainly can.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if maybe the public would be interested in as well, we can get it up on YouTube.
And, and in addition, I think we're going to have at least a couple of members that aren't going to be able to attend, so that may be a good idea. Any other questions about that? All right, great. Thank you. And that concludes my report, Mayor Proten.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Uh, the Community Engagement Commission?
Well, on January, uh, the January meeting, the C E C, that's what we call the Community Engagement Commission, by the way. Um, the little acronym there, uh, suggested, uh, the idea of developing an expanded community calendar posted of monthly events that would run from spring through the winter. And perhaps we offered during the sea, uh, seasonality. Uh, we also suggested obtaining details from local nonprofit communities, organizations about their own events coming up during the twenty twenty-three that we could also include in this calendar. From the ideas developed during the last month's meeting, city staff is planning to create something that will be available at time. Uh, usually it should be around the month of March. Um, we've also suggested using, uh, including a Q R code on the, this poster. So people can, uh, see the latest updates about the events that will be coming, that will be added to the city's website as the community events page. Um, also was going to mention the City Academy, but I don't need to now. Thank you, Mark. Uh, but, uh, we, as the C E C are going to be very actively involved in that also. So just letting you know. Uh, the C E C members will, uh, similarly, uh, be using our, uh, personal contacts to help promote a new city podcast that will be, uh, that will begin later this spring. The C E C has been offering several diverse and interesting, um, suggestions for topics to cover, uh, in the podcast. And the podcast will be used as another way for the public to be further engaged with the activities and the opportunities available in Liberty Lake. Uh, as always, our members are interested in the city of, uh, city council's needs. And us as the C E C want to continue working very closely with you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman of the C E C. All right, next up Spokane Valley Fire Department Chief.
Good evening, Council. And Ms. Mayor, if you're out there. I'll be reporting on January's numbers, uh, run numbers. So for the month of January, we had, uh, eighteen hundred and fifteen nine-one-one calls. And those calls generated twenty-four hundred and twenty-seven responses. So again, the response numbers are generally always going to be more than the incident numbers because certain, certain call volumes, certain, uh, call aspects require more units than just one. Next slide, please. Uh, so this is response by aid type. So I know that we've been talking about auto aid and what we are providing for our auto aid partners and what we receive from them. So this, uh, the, uh, circle on the left, top left is, uh, responses outside of our area that we've gone into to help provide auto aid. And then to the right of that, our district responses inside, uh, Valley Fires response area where they are providing us with auto aid. And then the very bottom kind of just breaks it up into the total amounts. So, uh, again, auto aid is a great thing. Um, you want to have that with your partners because you always have somebody there to respond with the quickest unit and most appropriate. Next slide, thank you. So the columns here, uh, they go ahead and what they're showing for the month is how many calls were generated in each fire districts, district. I know that, that's a, that's a double there, but so every, every fire station has their own little response area, if you will. And so that's how many calls are generated. So that would be considered, uh, having a call in that area. They are the first run to for that, for that district area. So, uh, if you look at that, Station Seven had the most runs at two hundred and sixty-six for the month. And then to the right of that is kind of a pinwheel circle that kind of really shows who's going on the most calls and based on percentage wise. And again, if you look down at, uh, Station One's at thirteen point seven seven percent, but Station Seven's the most at fourteen point six five. So again, those units are pretty busy. Next slide, please. This one's really small. We did that on purpose so we can razzle and dazzle, uh, and I could just make things up. No, I'm sorry. It's just some of these, they come up very small and even in mine, it's, it's pretty small. But what this is, is a breakdown of the category of calls that we go to. So we want to specifically, you'll see the two large columns in, in the middle are emergency medical services calls. The one on the left is advanced life support calls and the one on the right is basic life support calls. And this aligns with, uh, what we've seen the trend here for several years is sixty percent. The bulk of our, eh, emergency medical service calls are for advanced life support. So this is why having paramedics is very, uh, important and paramount, uh, in our responses. And then the rest are, are laid out in other things, all those other things that we do, hazmat, extrication, fires, uh, things of that nature. Next slide, please. This one is a year-to-year, kind of just shows you a comparison where we're at and how we, uh, have benchmarked ourselves against the previous years. As you can see, the trend, the trend here is going up. Obviously, we're busy. Um, I will say, um, that this, this January was not as busy. I, I say that not as busy, but it's, it was still quite busy. Uh, next slide, please. This is a year-to-year, but based by month. I know that, that's, uh, really strange. But if you look at this five-year window on your left with, with the columns, uh, so this is for each January over the last five years, but the January of nineteen, January twenty, January twenty-one, January twenty-two and January twenty-three. So clearly we are down, uh, from the three previous years, uh, but are still, um, still moving on up. We're still, uh, carrying a large base of calls, uh, moving into the, to the future here. Uh, next slide, please. So these are just some of the calls that we went on, uh, in January. On this call, it was a basement fire in Engine Nine's, uh, run district. It, uh, the call came in as a person possibly inside the house. We did do a primary search and nothing was, no person was found inside the home. Uh, we were, uh, able to put the fire out. We did have to provide vertical ventilation in order to, you know, keep that fire to one location within the home to put it out. Next slide. This one was an interesting call. So if you're not listening, this is one that you may want to listen in on. So this was a single car rollover with a trapped victim. The victim was a female and she was trapped by her ponytail. The car came to stop resting on her ponytail. And so, uh, we did have to cut her ponytail off in order to get her, uh, trapped on the vehicle. Look at her, she's touching her hair. I knew that. See, I told you, there's always, so it's just bizarre, some of those, there's just some of those weird calls. So, you know, thank goodness that she, uh, she is alive and it wasn't, she wasn't further underneath the car. It would have been a really bad outcome. Next slide, please. On this one, this one was actually a, a really bad call as well. Uh, there was two vehicles involved. Uh, this was at Sullivan and, um, I ninety, Engine Five's area, and this was a really, really bad call. We actually, when we got there, there was a gentleman trapped, uh, under the car, but not entirely just his arm. However, um, he, last we checked, he was alive, but he, I think he may have lost the arm. It, it was some, it was a significant, significant, um, uh, wreck. And so, uh, our prayers go out to him. Hopefully he has a full recovery, uh, even if he did lose his arm. So, uh, very bad call. Uh, that's all I have to report this evening. I just want to remind our, our voters to please vote on February fourteenth. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you for engaging on the next-door community who, um, dispel the rumors that are rampant there.
I tell you what, man, I have. They were, they, they were roasting me on there and I, and I'm okay with it. You know, I, I have no, uh, I'm not a liar. I'm not, uh, I'm very transparent. I'm all about the community. So I'm doing my best to get on there and dispel rumors or issues and concerns. Um, I'm, I know that we're not going to make everyone happy, uh, but, but you can't at least say that we're not being truthful or, or not being forthcoming or not trying to engage. We've been on everything. Um, so it's, it's, it's been a, it's been a hard push, so.
Chief, real quick, with the ponytail incident, what was the device used?
Jaws of life.
The jaws of scissors, sir. So, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, may I make a comment in response? Please. So I just wanted to thank Chief and his staff. We had a town hall last Thursday where the chief and his team came out to the library and made a presentation about the upcoming levy election. And although we had a low turnout, I just want to say thanks for, for coming out after hours. And I think we've had actually quite a bit more activity as that has been posted online, but, um, appreciate it.
Absolutely, no problem whatsoever.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right, next up is our Sewer and Water Department. Nada? Yeah, nobody online, Todd? Once, twice, moving right along. Thank you. Uh, okay. Uh, so we're going to move into our workshop discussion, uh, trailhead driving range polls and netting improvements.
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. Um, Todd, can you bring up my presentation, please? So I'm going to be very brief. I just want to give you a little bit of an update. Um, as you recall, in December, you awarded a contract to a design engineer to basically prepare conceptual designs for two scenarios. Um, uh, and, uh, to provide some cost estimates. I'm coming back to report to you on the. Um, uh, and, uh, to provide some cost estimates. I'm coming back to report to you on the findings of that. So in both these scenarios, um, the, uh, pole layout is going to be the same. The only question is the height of the poles. And, uh, um, again, um, uh, just, just to kind of orient yourself. Uh, the driving range is on the west side of the course. City Hall is on the north side of the course. The Arboretum is on the east side of the course and the golf course is on the south of the driving range. Next slide, please. So in scenario one, uh. This scenario was looking at, um, providing sixty feet of netting on the city hall side with. Uh, forty feet on the golf side and another sixty feet on the arboretum side. Again, with, uh, the poles designed to be, to be able to add an additional twenty foot extension. On all sides. The estimated cost for this scenario was eight hundred and fifty thousand to nine hundred fifty thousand. Um, a couple of things I want to point out is that, uh, the costs include demolition of the existing range and haul off of the existing poles. Tax, engineering, um. Uh, it doesn't, uh, um, it, it excludes any dirt haul off. Um, any labor equipment and material for that future extension should we decide to do a twenty foot extension on the poles. Um, and special inspection fees. So that's scenario one. Uh, next slide, please. Scenario two is again a similar, uh, a, a similar approach, but with on the city hall side. Uh, eighty feet in height. On the golf side, sixty feet in height and on the arboretum side, eighty feet in height. With the ability again to add an additional twenty foot extension on all sides. The estimated cost for this scenario is one point four million to one point five million. Again, the, uh, inclusions are the same. Demolition of the existing range and haul off of, uh, existing pools, engineering and taxes. Exclusions are dirt haul off and any labor equipment and material for future, um, extensions. And of course, special inspection fees. So those are the two scenarios. Um, again, uh, I'm coming back to you to provide me with some directions so that I can. Provide the engineer with some direction to complete the design. Uh, and go out to bid for this. Now, um, he's pretty confident in his cost estimates. Because he actually shopped this with three vendors. And so, um, he's pretty confident in the, in the dollar amount. But again, the quicker we. Uh, provide him direction, the quicker we can turn around and get these bids while the prices are still hot.
Discussion?
Discussion. Next slide, please.
There we go.
Thank you.
Go ahead, question, Jess.
I guess my first best question would be, where does the insurance company say? We're looking at sixty foot or eighty foot? What do we have to go with?
So Kyle and I talked to them previously. Um, they haven't given us specific direction. What they did say was that, that we needed to. Improve the situation and that we be, we needed to have the ability to go farther if. Our solution was not adequate. Um, we're looking for your direction. Um, and, uh, um, at this point, uh, I think, uh, Kyle and I have discussed this and we would recommend. The, um, uh, scenario one. Um, and if that is the direction that you city council wish to go. Um, we will have that conversation with clear risk before we give any more direction to the engineer. Um, uh, again, uh. Either way, we're going to have the conversation with Claris before we, before we proceed with, uh, the final design and bidding.
And Lisa to tack on to that, the discussion was, and the strategy was. We are going to present our insurance company with our plan for improvements and have them sign off on that.
Yes. But we wanted it to be your plan.
Okay, Chris.
I think Councilmember Kurt said, you can comment too.
Well, and the vagueness of whether the insurance, it's not your answer, Lisa, it's just the vagueness of whether it's going to be okay. Um, it. What if it's not? Then we have to go at the one point, the, the higher cost. So. I'm, I will be looking forward to hearing what your, um, conversation is with Clear Risk. Um. Does the, do both scenarios include the netting?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I, I was, uh, also Lisa just going to ask about the insurance, uh, company. And I would agree that. Think scenario one is probably the best with the, the caveat that obviously if the insurance company says that's not good enough, we could extend. I guess my question is. Scen- scenario one include or has the option to extend to sixty? At a later date, do we know what, do we have a ballpark of what that option is going to cost? And the reason why I ask that is because I'm trying to figure out if maybe there's a scenario one B. And that is that we go with scenario one. And then if that's not good enough, then we come back with maybe sixty. And then if that's not good enough, then we fall back into scenario two. Does that make sense?
So let me, let me, um, so what I heard you say was that you would go with scenario one, which is. Um, again, on two sides, it's sixty. So that's Arboretum and City Council side. And on the golf course side, it's forty. With the ability to go, and again, this is the thing that I think is important to understand. Is that we have to design the pools now to have the ability to. Uh, have a potential extension. If we don't do it now, it, so if we said, okay, we're going to do. Scenario B, but we're going to do. Right out, out of the chute, eighty, eighty and sixty. The reality is that we would not have the ability to then go another twenty feet if, um, that was not adequate. Um, I do not have the cost estimates for it. And frankly, it, we, we would be, uh, shooting at the moon for that. Without knowing timeframe, if, if we were going to do it, when we were going to do it, what's going to happen to, to prices, et cetera. Um, if two years down the road, we decided to do it, I would, um. I could probably come up with, uh, a swag as to what that is, looking at the, um. Looking at a prorated cost, um, and applying our, uh, eight and a half percent per year. Uh, which is right now the five-year average for construction cost.
But we. Lisa, we could, um, correct if I'm wrong here, if I'm not understanding this. We could go scenario, we could take scenario one to the insurance kind of company. If they come back and say that's not good enough. Could, there's, you're saying that there's no middle ground. There's no way for us to go up to and say, okay, well, we'll do, we'll do, uh, eighty. Although eighty on this, uh, north and east side and then s- sixty on the south side.
That's scenario B. Or that's the second scenario.
Right, but the, but, but you're saying is that in scenario one, I'm sorry, this is getting a little confusing. Scenario one, if we went with scenario one with the potential to increase, we could not then increase on top of that as well, is what you're saying.
That's, that's correct. So, so, um, uh, uh, again, I, I would. I- if you want to, um. If, if the insurance company, um, does not feel that, that scenario one is good enough. My recommendation would be to present then the option, the, the scenario two is the option. I, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know how else to approach it.
I'll, I'll add to that real quick. Sorry, Councilmember Dunn. We have had these discussions. Unofficially with the insurance companies already, and we have some assurances that. Scenario one would be approved because. To our point, we are addressing an inadequacy and we are working towards that improvement.
And we have the ability to, again, um, go farther if need be.
Yeah. Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yeah, so just a couple of questions. Um, if I remember right, Kyle, we already had a, a million set aside for this purpose. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So, um, then the next question I would have is, um, Lisa, you mentioned that if. You know, at some point, if we went with scenario one, at some point, it's determined that that's not adequate. We've got to go up. Um, and you know, let's, let's say worst case scenario, six months in, uh, ball flies over and hits somebody and we've got to go up. Uh, I guess my question is, what would the cost be? You know, let's assume that we had to go, we had to go up to the max eighty and sixty on scenario one. Six months down the road, my question would be, what would that cost be compared to, you know? Starting with scenario, scenario one and then having to go up to the max. Within a short period of time compared to scenario two, where we can start at the, the max of scenario one and have the, the ability to go up. It doesn't sound like that's scenario has been run, but I'm just curious as to. You know, whether that would help us make that decision.
I, I don't have that information.
Yeah, I, I would speak enthusiastically, Lisa, to scenario one. Uh, as you suggest, to present to, um, our underwriter for consideration and report back to the council regarding their discussion.
Well, and so I would like to, I would like to ask that if that is, if that is your, the, the direction of council. And the underwriter agrees that I may be given, uh. Charge to just have the, um, engineer complete the design and bid specs.
Uh, so Mayor Protem, I move that we direct staff to present scenario one to the underwriter for consideration. Given the underwriter concurs that scenario one is acceptable, staff be given, uh, proceed to the next steps with the engineer. Second.
Who's second to? Perfect, thank you. Discussion.
So just, just real quickly, uh, what sort of assurance are we going to get? Uh, for a time period that that will be acceptable before they come back? And I mean, is it going to take some sort of incident? That will, uh, cause us to move it up to the max, uh, eighty and sixty in scenario one? Or what, what is, what, what's the criteria going to be for us to be required to move up to that height?
It will be a function of the number of balls that, uh. May or may not be going over the netting that we have provided.
Can I ask one more question?
Oh, sorry, Wendy.
Just going to ask, uh, just refresh my memory. How tall is a net right now?
I'm sorry, say again.
How tall is our net currently?
I believe that on the golf side, it's twenty feet. And on the other two sides, it's forty feet.
Yes.
So we're already going twenty feet above. I, I, I think we've got this. Yep.
Lisa, one comment if I can.
Yes.
Yes. A- a- as I look at the plans, it's drawn on flat ground. The eighty feet is based off the, the ball surface of the driving range. On the side that's been the most bothersome for most everybody is the city hall side. And if we're going to put the poles in the exact same spot, we're going to gain some elevation from the berm that goes along that side of the. Of the, uh, driving range itself. Um, seems to me, I mean, that sixty feet across the arboretum and like you said earlier, double on the golf course side. That should meet the needs with the ability to go another twenty feet later on. One other comment is. This thing isn't going anywhere. Steel poles, two feet around, sixteen feet in the ground. Um, that's just, I'm sorry, that just catches my attention. That's incredible how deep these things are going to be in the ground. The sixty footers are going to be twenty feet in the ground. So, uh, call for locate. Thank you. Yes, is there a warranty, Lisa, on this?
Um, I would believe so, yes. I, I will certainly verify that. Um, in fact, we'll, we can make certain that it's written into the bid specs that they, that they do warranty it. I'm not sure that they'd warranty the netting, but obviously the poles, I, I think, um, would be warranted.
Thank you.
I support option one and with regard to what goes under the ground. I was working for Red River Tramway for many years and, uh. In some of the cases, there's more below the ground than there is above the ground, especially if you live in a mountain where there's thirty-six inch bases. I think this is more than enough.
I, I do have one final comment if I can, back to what Jed was saying. Um, I'd be curious to see what the difference is, uh, in adding the twenty feet, the cost wise. Six months from now versus going to scenario two at the minimum. Because if it's another two, three hundred thousand to add the twenty feet, then we're halfway there to already on scenario two. So. That may help with a, of the backup plan or whatever. So, but I'm in favor of scenario one, yes. Oh, perfect. Yes, sorry. Chris?
Chris.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, just to let you know, the, the poles on the golf side are twenty-five feet. The ones on the arboretum side are thirty feet and the ones on city hall side are between fifty to fifty-five feet right now. If that helps with your. So I know Lisa said they're forty feet on the city hall side. They're, they're, they, they range from fifty to fifty-five. So my only concern, just letting you know, is that if you go from fifty-five to sixty feet, you're not going. On the, on the city hall side, it's not, it's not raising it very much. So I just want to. Give you the exact numbers.
Right, yes.
Where is the biggest gap where the balls are coming out? Is there a particular side of the?
It is, this, it is the city hall side, um, although there is a fair bit on the arboretum also.
Yeah, I, I guess my question is, I, I guess I assumed that the current, uh, heights. Uh, we were just going up proportionately, um, have we looked at the scenario where we go eighty, eighty feet? In the problem areas and then go back down. So I mean, you know, city hall side is currently at fifty-five. Do we, you know, look at the option of going up to eighty for a few of those poles to knock those balls down and then go back down to fifty? I'm just curious as to why it was, the new proposal was designed this way. Uh, not proportionate to what we currently have.
So I'm having a really hard time hearing you, um. Uh, Councilmember Spencer, be, um, if you could speak into your microphone, I, I think I caught it and I think, um, but that this. The way it works is the, the standard netting is twenty feet high. And so we're trying to do the simplest design for to, um, uh, reduce. Cost and, um, challenges with the design. Anyhow, we could go to, we could certainly look at doing eighty feet. On the city hall side. Sixty feet, you said it was forty feet on the, or is it forty feet on the arboretum side, Chris? Is that what you said?
It's thirty feet. Thirty, it's between thirty, yeah, it's between thirty to thirty-three feet on the arboretum side and then twenty-five on the golf course side.
So we could do a hybrid of this and we could certainly do eighty feet, um, on the, the city hall side. Um, sixty feet on the arboretum side and forty feet on the, the golf side. Um, if that was something that you all wanted to consider.
With the ability to add twenty feet later.
With the ability to add twenty feet.
There's your. Option one point five.
I think it was one B, wasn't it?
Well, we have a motion on the floor for scenario one. I mean, I'm. I don't want to speak for everybody, but for me, I, I like that one point five option. But we have a motion on the floor. You can amend that one if you want, just. If that's the will of council.
Um, I think a one point five proposal would have a different cost basis, given that we agreed that that's going to be presented and accepted.
Understood.
Yeah, I, I was just going to comment that I wouldn't feel comfortable giving the go-ahead for one point five without knowing what one point five is going to cost.
No, I agree. So Lisa, is that something that is easily sought out or?
Or, so when you say scenario one point five, that would be eighty feet on the city hall side, sixty feet on. On the arboretum side. And forty feet on the, uh, on the golf side. Is that what you're calling one point five?
Yeah.
I can get that information. I will not, I'm on vacation next, uh, council meeting, so I'd have to bring it back to you. I can get that information, I will not, I'm on vacation next council meeting, so I'd have to bring it back to you in March.
Does that delay then the information you needed to move forward?
Yeah, I don't. Think that timeline is fine, isn't it? What is our golf pro have to say?
As far as the timeline is concerned, um. Yeah, that was another um, discussion I wanted to have. As far as when the install was going to be anyway, because the last thing we want to do is have the install in June or July when it's the busiest, so. Um, you know. Delaying to find out uh, the correct size would be ideal for us, I just, I just think you. Um, if you put it at sixty feet on that city hall side, we're going to have the same amount of golf balls going over on the city hall side, so that was my only concern was that. Um, and just so you know, actually, the most amount of balls that are going over the fence are on the right hand side. But of course, that goes on to the golf course where there's not as many people, so. Um. If that helps at all.
So for you. Yes, I, I suppose there's a third option, maybe that's one point five point five. Um, and that would be that we say, I know there's a, a motion on the floor right now, but we could either amend that motion or, or. Change it to say the eighty, sixty, forty, that doesn't go above. A million dollars, and then that way, if Lisa gets back the bid and it's below a million, then she can just move forward. And if it's above a million, then it can come back to council, since a million is the, what we budgeted for.
So. At a cost of eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty thousand with scenario one. Um, I, I, I respectfully. Uh, doubt that it's, that it's going to come in under a million dollars.
Right. Half the dis- difference, one point two five.
Yeah, I'm picking a number.
No, I understand, but yeah.
Which you can before the.
But she can move forward, right?
As to Chris's concern about timing, we can include in the bid specs, the period of time that we want to have the um. The uh, poles and netting installed, so, so we can control that through the bid specs, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, question.
Yeah, so my, my question is, so does, does each side have to be the same height? Uh, because I would imagine the balls going over the city hall side are closer. Um, closer to the driving range where they're hitting. I'm just curious whether you can go, you know, halfway down at eighty and then drop to sixty, just, just trying to figure out the best, best scenario, so we're not. You know, if, if we do go with the one point five, we're going to be over a million. Um, so are there ways to kind of find a happy medium? Um, I, I do agree that going to the forty on the, on the uh. Golf side is, is appropriate, because that's, everybody's slicing it over to that side, so. I think the forty should knock down a lot of those. Did you hear my question, Lisa?
I did, I'm not sure where to go with this, um, we hired an engineer to design this. Tell me what you want, what cost estimate you want and I will go back and ask for it.
Uh, well, I'm just curious whether that's even possible, you mentioned that the netting comes in twenty foot sections.
Yeah.
Go up to eighty on one, on one section, can you not hear me?
I, I.
Yeah, so, so are you able to on one wall go up to eighty in one section and then toward the back go down to sixty? Or, or does the whole wa- length have to be the same height? That's, that's just the question.
And I don't know the answer, uh, I, I don't know the answer.
But for, for planning purposes and budgeting purposes, it's not going to be worse than eighty, sixty, forty.
That's correct.
Yeah. So if we can shave it down, then great, yeah.
Alrighty, I will plan on, I will uh, reach out to.
Hold on, hold on Lisa, we still have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Councilmember done?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, I amend my motion to state eighty, sixty, forty in the high target. With a one point two five uh, cap, if that's achievable through engineering and acceptable to the underwriter. Uh, staff can bring that back in the next round for approval.
Second.
Second.
Who seconded? Annie, I'm just trying to help Kyle over here. Uh, okay, so we have a motion to amend the original motion, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of? The motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the amendment passes, now back to the amended motion.
Original one.
The original emotion that's now amended, thank you. Uh, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Yes.
Perfect. Wow. Okay, uh, as we stated earlier in our agenda, we're gonna. We're gonna uh, uh, reschedule uh, code of ethics and we'll move on to our proposed storage for Winter Glow. Not sure who that is.
Oh, I know who that is. Mr. Mark. Never seen. Thanks, Todd.
My name is Mark Saba, I'm on the board of directors of uh, Winter Glow. And I have a little presentation I'd like to put forth to the city council. Uh, the Winter Glow uh, just finished its fourth year in Liberty Lake. The Winter Glow light display at Or- at Orchard Park. Has made Liberty Lake a showplace during the holiday season. Attracting thousands of people throughout the inland empire. The Greenstone Foundation, next slide please, Todd. The Greenstone Foundation was kind enough to temporarily donate land. North of Indiana, across the street from Orchard Park for storage. Winter Glow built a temporary storage and work compound. In the donated site. The time has come that Winter Glow must find a permanent home. Next slide, please, Todd. Thank you. Winter Glow is proposing to have build a. Forty by eighty by sixteen storage building to be located south of the tennis court. And west of the concession stand in Li- in Orchard Park. The building will feature concrete floor, electricity, overhead door, as well as a man doors on each side of the building. The estimated cost of the building, and I went through uh, Greenstone and Lisa. Um, it is approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The Greenstone Foundation will construct and front the cost. Tiff and lift reimbursables to Greenstone, to the Greenstone Foundation would give money back to Greenstone for them out. With that said, I'm short and sweet and to the point, um. Appreciate your consideration on this, does anyone have any questions, I bet you do.
Go ahead, I, I'm just curious, uh, what, what uh, locations were explored? I, I, I think it is obviously ideal to have it at the park, is, were there other spots that were kind of explored?
We, we just looked at the park, we just looked at the park, because. As big as Orchard Park is, um, and the location and where, uh, and the. Simplicity of us setting up, um, we just looked at Orchard Park.
Yeah, I should clarify, a- at the park itself, were there other locations at the park?
Yes, there was, the, where the maintenance building is, or, and the only reason why we chose where we're at right here is because. Um, we didn't want to be close to any residents. The building itself being, you know, a deterrent, so that's what we were looking at, that's why we chose this uh, location.
It's probably going to be more secure right in the center as well.
Absolutely, yeah. And as for us setting up.
Yeah.
Well, that space isn't used very much either.
Pardon me?
That space isn't used very much, it's sort of a dead space.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Uh, it's also a low space.
Yes, it is.
Where we got some water the first years.
Yep.
Councilmember Kurt.
Thanks, Mark, uh, uh, two quick questions for you, can you give us an idea of what this building is going to look like, what it's made of, is it like a? Metal shield built, uh, sheet building or?
Joe, what, what, what's the building going to look like?
Okay. Great, okay, and then, uh, second question. God forbid, Winter Glow doesn't happen anymore, or something happens in the future and, you know, things don't work out. Uh, I guess maybe this is a question for Jen, is this a building that we could house more? Things in, uh, in the future, is Jen still on?
Yes, yes, I am.
Yes, and yes it will.
Yes, yes, and yes, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
We are running out of elbow room.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Sean, for you, is there any issues with private construction on public property?
Think about that for a minute.
You don't have to answer the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back to that, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kurt.
Mark, is this enough room if Winter Glow keeps expanding?
Yes, yes, it is, we, we made sure of that, yeah, because um, right now, our storage space is approximately. Twenty-four hundred square feet where we're at now. And this here would be about thirty-two. So yeah, we did definitely look for the future, yes.
So that was my question is, you're not going from that little green building you had, oh, eight by sixteen to. Thirty-two hundred square feet, are you gonna, seriously though, are you going to use all of it or can some of it be allocated to Parks Department for?
Um, I, I believe some of it could be used for the arts department, you know, we can make that, we can make that work out, you know.
So I think if I may weigh in, it was my understanding and Mark and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong. That there would be an MOU um, with that building. That in the case that the, the Winter Glow group did not use it any longer, it would. Somehow go to the city, or the city would be able to utilize that, that building and that facility.
If I may, if I may, actually, the intent was that this would be tiff and lift reimbursable, the city would own it and they would have. Uh, um, the city would own the building and they would have a, an MOU with. Winter Glow to allow them to use it for storage, but we would ultimately own it, we would have to own it for it to be tiff and lift reimbursable.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I guess, well, is everybody agreed to? Ask Winter Glow to bring this back as an agenda, uh, action item at, for uh, upcoming council meeting?
Yeah, just had a quick comment, um, so i- if, if uh, the Parks Department is um. Elbow to elbow, was there a discussion about making the building slightly larger while you're already building it? So that you can utilize it for. S- you know, city equipment?
No, I don't think at this point, I think in the future, it could be used as an excess overflow. Um, but that's certainly a discussion we can have with them.
All right, and thank you to the Greenstone folks for participating.
You bet, thank you guys and. Look forward to the action item at the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Um, so uh, since we have a rookie over at the recording station. Uh, please, uh, whoever seconds these motions, be sure that he gets it, right? I'm just following orders. Uh, okay, so general business uh, item, A, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, ten A and B.
Second.
Second by his councilmember Solberg, uh, discussion. I, I have one thing I'd like to bring up, um. On uh, uh, page thirty-four of two hundred and sixty-six. It refers to uh, some unemployment compensation. And uh, I talked to Kyle earlier, but earlier today about this, so I just wanted to uh, have him speak to that.
So every once in a while, we will see.
Every once in a while, you'll see a bill from the unemployment security department show up. What that is, is us paying direct costs of what we see come in as approved unemployment from that department. We don't pay payroll premiums uh, monthly or on a quarterly basis. We pay actual costs and historically that has saved the city a uh, pretty substantial amount of money. Good enough, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, general business eleven I, A, uh, excuse me. Uh, make a motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere gator with snowplow in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Second by. Councilmember Kurt's. Discussion. I just have one question, is the uh, is the gator enclosed or is it not? And does it need to be? Maybe it doesn't. Yes, yes, it's fully enclosed. Perfect, just looking out for whoever's operating that thing. Coming with a snowplow, you know, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, general business eleven B, uh, make a motion to approve the donation of five thousand dollars to Liberty Lake Library. Second by councilmember Solberg, discussion? I just had one question on the form, uh, just for recording purposes, um. Does it need to say on the, on the form, it's for the Liberty Lake Library?
Okay, where we go or?
I thought on the don- donation form that it did say for the Liberty Lake Library?
It, it, well. It's on page seventy-seven of two hundred and sixty-six. Um. And I was looking for it, because I just wanted to make sure that it, it just says approve the donation. The summary statement on the agenda item says. To the Liberty Lake Library, when I look at the donation form. Uh, just says City of Liberty Lake.
Seventy-nine at the top.
Am I missing?
Yeah, at the, at the bottom of the top paragraph, it says accounted for by the City of Liberty Lake. Well, let's see. Okay, yeah, I thought, I thought it said the municipal library.
Everything I read, this, it just says City of Liberty Lakes, I just wanted to make sure it's recorded to the proper place.
We can double check when the mayor signs the form and make sure that it says library on it, if that works for you guys.
Please.
That was my only comment, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Perfect, pa- motion passes, uh, and you. Item agenda eleven C, make a motion to approve the payment. Of ten thousand, two oh four and twenty-six cents to the Office of the Secretary of State for the Libraries Washington Anytime Digital Library Subscription.
Second.
Second by councilmember Kurt's. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, make a motion to approve the purchase of a Toro Multi Pro seven fifty golf course sprayer in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by councilmember Kurt's. You good, Kyle? Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Make a motion to approve the purchase of a fuel tank and fuel cloud setup in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
Second by councilmember Kurt's, any discussion?
Just a quick question. Where is that fuel tank and clouds that are going to be? Is that over with the maintenance facility?
Uh, Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, that's back behind city hall, right?
So they're actually going to be um, upgrading the current tank setup that we have, uh. It's a mobile tank setup that primarily fills up the golf carts over at the bro shop. Uh, but also mobile tank setup, so it'll actually be in a vehicle. And the fuel cloud system will be tied into the current. Fuel cloud system that is on the diesel tank and unleaded tank behind the maintenance shop.
Perfect, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of an RC mower, fifty-two inch rotary slope mower in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seventy-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Second by. Councilmember Solberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, make a motion to approve the purchase of security cameras, installation costs and monthly subscription for the three buildings located at city hall. Address in the amount of thirty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Second by councilmember Spencer, discussion, yes.
Quick question, um, and I'm not sure who would be best to answer this. Uh, do the cameras on GH and I on our um, action items, do they all work in coordination or are they all going to work? In coordination with each other, or how's that? in coordination with each other, or how's that gonna be set up?
You're looking at the wrong guy.
I know.
Yes, the, these will all, um, it's essentially the same dashboard to where uh, police and whoever is gonna be viewing them will have the access to them while they are in separate locations. It'll all be tied into the same dashboard for quicker and easier viewing of these cameras.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, also, uh, we will have, uh, the ability through, uh, VMS, uh, software and Flock to integrate all of our city cameras and just into our Flock system, so officers on the street will have access to, um, not only our cameras, but the Flock cameras and DOT cameras, et cetera.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of security cameras, installation costs, and monthly subscription for Trailhead in the amount of thirty thousand, five sixty-four and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cargill. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? None, motion passes. Make a motion to approve the purchase of security cameras, installation costs, and monthly subscription for the library and police station in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Second by councilmember Van Orman. Discussion. If, I, I just have one question, and I don't know, um, if it's too late, but um, on our new library coming down the road, will we, can we gear that up now, since we're gearing all the other buildings up? Or do we, do we wait?
If, if I can answer, um, as far as I know, we were waiting basically until, uh, we were basically getting ready to move in, and then as well as the, um, Public Works Building, once we have basically a structure out there, also integrate, um, this system going into these three locations with the new library location and the public work yard.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jim Balkner Bonker, sorry, as a voting member on the Planning Commission with a term expiration of December thirty-first, twenty-three. Second by councilmember Solberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Cynthia help, somebody help me out. Godinez, okay, to position five of the Community Engagement Commission. Second by councilmember Kurtz. Discussion.
I'm just grateful for Mr. Bonker and Ms. Godinez's contributions to our community. Thanks.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Uh, perfect, thank you. Uh, next item, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the purchase of three desktop computers for the Police Department in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. Second by councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the street dedication agreement for Indiana Avenue from Bitterroot to east of Harvard Road in the River District. Second by councilmember Solberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the signal dedication agreement for the Indiana Harvard Traffic Signal.
Second.
Second by councilmember Spencer. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Alrighty, motion passes. Make a motion to approve the purchase of Evolution Traffic Speed Sign and Trailer for a total of eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, using a portion of the funds donated to the Liberty Lake Police Department. Second by councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? And finally, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the master site agreement for a Vista Electric Vehicle DC Fast Charging Installation at Trailhead Golf Course. Second by councilmember Solberg, right? Yes, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alrighty. Uh, any further council comments?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question. Um, so when, when we see these action items, uh, that we are submitting for Tiff and Lift, uh, reimbursement, the assumption is that from a budgeting standpoint, we budgeted, assuming that we weren't going to get those, um, so anything coming back goes back into the general fund. Is that right?
Uh, so as staff, what we'll bring back to council, and it usually is in three-year increments, and it is a list of projects uh, that the city and developers and other, um, parties will enter into agreements, understanding that these will be public infrastructure projects, so if it's a private developer, they will dedicate those uh, to the city, that then becomes their vehicle then to go submit for Tiff and Lift reimbursement.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Or comments, or council comments? Hearing none, we'll move along. No public hearings. Item Agenda fourteen, Resolutions.
Resolution zero-two, zero-four-eight-F. Resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending Resolution zero-two, zero-four-eight-E, passed by the City Council on April seventh, twenty-twenty, entitled, A Resolution Adopting a Financial Management Policy for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington. So we can go through this council, uh, a couple of different ways. We can separate them by policy and in, and approve each individual policy at that level, or we can, uh, if council feels, we can do a blanket approval, so I, I, I would look for some direction from council.
The only issue that I had was on page two-twenty-five and two-thirty-one regarding what we had voted on last year, uh, was to keep it at the five thousand mark and above for council. As in the rest, I'm, I'm good.
And I can expand on that a little bit, and so I did go back and review that council meeting, and there was some discussion about keeping it at the five thousand, there would never was a vote, but what council really, I think, kinda drove home was then there were three verbal agreements or three verbal quotes versus three actual documented written quotes. That was kind of the, the nature of the feedback that we received on the changes in the procurement policy was, there was no in, no intent of council to transition from a written quote to a verbal quote. And to that point, we can certainly continue that discussion. If council still wants to keep it at the five thousand, we can, we can vote on that tonight, absolutely.
Was, was that what you were referring to?
Yeah, instead of raising it to seventy-five-hundred. That's, that we voted on, um, back in May of last year. They came back.
I don't recall, so.
I feel like we had a vote on whether to expand the golf pro's ability to spend more at a time, which was inconsistent with the policy, which is why we reviewed the policy.
So, correct, back in, uh, I believe it was late January, there was an initial approval to allow the golf pro to purchase merchandise for resale, and I think that was initially set at five thousand dollars, that was brought back for reconsideration, and was brought back down to five thousand.
But I don't know that there was a vote on the overall spending limit for other departments, I think it was specific to the golf pro.
So if we do this, if we decide to move it to seventy-five-hundred, what we're initially saying is that, that's good for everyone, that's what the financial policies were.
Yeah, I think we will try to make it consistent, yeah.
So is there, so I understand, so is there a desire to leave it at the five thousand for all departments? This resolution says seventy-five-hundred for all departments, is that correct?
That was the recommendation from staff, and that is purely the council's purview to say, no, we do not, we reject that recommendation, we want to keep it at the five thousand with all of our others recommended changes in place.
So did you make that change in this resolution?
No, so it, I brought forward as a staff recommendation, uh, based on our discussion at the workshop. There are no substantive changes in what you see here based on our workshop discussion.
Other than the five thousand, yeah, maximum.
No, so that is a, that's a discussion the council can have, so the, the recommendation and what is included in the financial policies is the seventy-five-hundred dollar limit with the three written quotes.
Right.
And so that is something that we can vote on as a body, or, or, I mean, just outright choose not to vote on, and we default to the current policy.
Kyle, if I, if I may, just for clarification, um, the resolution for the council right now is at seventy-five-hundred, correct?
Correct.
To the extent that the council wants to change it from seventy-five-hundred back to five thousand, they would have to make another motion to remove the seventy-five-hundred and make it five thousand.
And what we can do is we can piece this out to, to single out that piece, and approve them, I guess, by, by policy.
Yeah, um, so it was my understanding that raising it to the seventy-five-hundred, because we were, we were at five thousand since the the foundation of the city, so it was my understanding that we were kind of doing this to kind of adjust with the times. Um, I guess, I, I would like to hear what are, what are the main concerns with raising it to the seventy-five-hundred?
And if there are none.
No concerns.
Any concerns?
I'm just listening. I don't have an opinion on this one yet.
Well, we're gonna vote here. That's, that's kinda why I'm asking a question, because, uh.
So, so, so far what we're seeing, every time something comes through, that's with the A through P, it's four, is all of those that are within our realm, otherwise you wouldn't be seeing things. And you'd just be seeing them on the voucher level. So, um, do you want to see the things that are coming before you, or do you just wanna approve them wholeheartedly with the voucher level?
No, I guess the, my follow-up question to that would be, um, what, what mechanism is in place? I mean, the assumption is, when, when we go through and approve all these, these have already been approved at the budget level, we, they, they already, uh, submitted these with their budget to be approved. So we have the opportunity, when we go through the budgeting process, to say, yeah, that, that looks like it's gonna be too much, or, or whatever. Um, but we also approve the vouchers, so, um, I don't know, I, again, I, I don't know, I, I wanna hear the concerns.
If you're looking for my feedback, uh, I, I don't, I don't disagree with the, uh, it's been five thousand since the establishment of the city, and it costs more to do business now than it did twenty years ago, so to allow, to move the maximum of twenty-five-hundred dollars isn't to me, unreasonable, I guess.
That was the reason why I brought it up. Okay.
Yes.
So I guess if there aren't any concerns about the seventy-five-hundred dollar limit, can we vote on this as one ordinance versus piecing it out? I'm sorry, yes.
To the extent there's not something else there that someone, the council wants to talk about.
I think that was the only one from our workshop, was it not? Everybody agreed? Yep.
So Kyle, I think we need a motion on the resolution itself, right?
Uh, that's correct, yeah, so, go ahead.
Mayor Protem, I move resolution O, O-two dash, O-four-eight-F, as stated.
Second.
Second by councilmember Solberg. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all, uh, sorry, citizen comments, sorry, I'm new at this. Hearing none, we'll move along. Do I need to time it? No, just offer? Okay, just checking. Alright, any other discussion from council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright, the resolution passes.
Resolution, uh, number two-three dash, two-four-two, a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, naming the meeting space at the Trailhead Clubhouse as Rotary Room and providing for an effective date.
Mayor Protem, I'm, I move resolution twenty-three dash, two forty-two, as stated.
Second by councilmember Cargill. Discussion. Any further discussion? From our last workshop? Hearing none, all in favor say, uh, sorry, dang it, just missing comment. Anybody on Zoom, sorry, there we go. He can be taught. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. We have no ordinances, we have no emergency ordinances. Introduction of upcoming agenda items. Are you gonna take that, or am I?
So I can offer a suggestion, um, if.
Well, I have some things written down here that we would like, like to see added.
Okay.
Have a discussion about adding.
Shoot, and then I'll follow up with mine.
So why don't we just shoot right out of the gates here with the request for the, uh, River District Parking Ordinance?
Two ninety-two.
I'm sorry?
Uh, two ninety-two.
Two ninety-two. Uh, I guess the first question is, um, uh, is one, is there a desire to revisit it? Based on some of the feedback I'm getting, it sounds like we, we may want to, but.
What I, I voted to accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission, not to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I also would like.
Um, I, I wanted to, in, in Joe's email to, to all of the council, yeah, he mentioned that, that uh, there was some confusion with staff, or I don't know if that's the right word, confusion, but just that, uh, expectations about what, what came out of that approval, so I'm curious, and maybe, um, yeah, maybe Lisa's the best person to ask, we, it, can you confirm whether that was the case? Did you also get that email from Joe?
Uh, I, I did, in fact, we had talked about it before, and, um, I had, uh, also talked to Sean about it, and uh, followed up with Phil, because I, I think I was ex, I was very clear in the, um, public hearing, and the first read of the ordinance about the fact that what was advertised was, um, all of the, uh, all of the amendments coming forward, and because it was advertised before the Planning Commission made a decision, I had no choice but to put it forward in the method that I did. Um, and that we had a discussion at that workshop, that in order to approve it, or, or to, in order to, um, support the Planning Commission's recommendation, there'd be, need to be a motion to um, amend the ordinance to remove Exhibit E. And again, we didn't have, we didn't have any discussion before the second read, and I think that, um, I was actually surprised that it, it was voted without any discussion, so I mean, that just took me by surprise. So, um, again, I had asked a question of, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, if it had been his intent to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation, or if it was his intent to approve the ordinance as it was presented. And I think that I, and, and he felt there may have been some confusion, and I wholeheartedly support if what the council voted on was not what they intended to vote on, um, the simple solution is for anyone who voted for it, to make a motion to reconsider it.
So, uh, Mayor Protem, I move, uh, the council reconsider ordinance two ninety-two.
Second.
Second by councilmember Solberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright, perfect, so with that, then we I don't know, uh, how urgent the matter is, but obviously on a near and upcoming council agenda, we would wanna add that.
Absolutely, and that was gonna be my suggestion, so, yes, we'll get that on a soon-to-be, um, or, or a council agenda that's close to this one.
And the, the only other, the only other thing for, that I wrote down from today's And the, the only other, the only other thing for, that I wrote down from today's meeting or tonight's meeting. Is since we lim, uh, amended our agenda and not talking about the code of the, the ethics, social media policy. To add that at a later, another council meeting at some point. When the mayor's feeling better. Any issues with any of that? Other than that, um. Um, um, um. January seventeenth, we have our leverage workshop, no, we already had that, sorry, February, when is it February? I guess we have nothing workshop related for the, our next meeting on the twenty first. Is that, am I reading that right, Mark?
That's what it currently says, uh, although if. Council so desires and, and the mayor is able to, we can slot that, uh, tentatively in the ethics discussion for the twenty first.
You know, that should be during the reg, regular session?
Regular session, right?
Yeah, if that's, if that's council's preference, absolutely. Just offering it as an option.
Good? Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and take the newsletter off. I really truly believe that the Zen City. Uh, will fit the bill and figure that. Exactly what I was looking for.
Okay, council member Foyer. Um, one follow-up, and I think Sean, you were checking on this. Um, where do we stand with the hub donation?
Um, I don't think, I need to follow up with Mark, I don't think we had, um. Much dialogue, because there were some other things, so I'll, I'll, I'll follow up on that if you have that.
Okay.
Aspect of it. And I can add some context to that. So we had had some follow-up discussions with Bill Champlin, uh, over at the hub. And we are going to bring back some, all, some potential alternatives to the, uh. Uh, the. Tours and Promotion Capital Funds. Uh, they're having internal discussions, I believe, at the hub as to what is the preferred route if they want to re-ask. Um. And we'll have some. Updates as they relay that information.
I will say, I will say this, Chris, I forgot, um. There were some statutory concerns with that, and Kyle and I did speak, um, I forgot about that. Um, with regard to that, which then Kyle was gonna go back and talk to Phil. To try to find some other, um, opportunities, and I think that's what it was.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Any other workshop related comments, questions or? Thoughts? Alright, hearing none, we'll move right along. Mark, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay, perfect. Um, alright, then we'll move on to citizen comments. I don't see any yellow sheets, but that's okay. Any citizen comments? Todd, anybody on Zoom? Negative. Okay, that's my understanding, we are going to have an executive session, uh. Correct? Uh, regarding, um. Per RCW forty two thirty one ten one G, we're getting personal matters, no decisions will be made. And when we return, we will adjourn. Isn't that how it goes?
Yeah, how long, how long do we need?
I would say fifteen minutes.
So we'll start at. Nine o'clock, be out at nine fifteen.
Did I hear anything? Alrighty, thank you. Thanks for everybody coming.
Yes. We're gonna do an extension of five minutes to nine twenty for the, uh, executive session.
See you later, alligator.